Planning Commission meeting of Tuesday, June 11th, 2024. At this point, I would like to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Here.
Commissioner Gorn?
I'm here.
Commissioner Hernandez?
I am present.
Vice Chair Johannes?
Present.
And Chair Gossett?
Here.
All Plenary Commissioners are present this evening.
Okay, next, we'll move into the approval of our minutes from May 14th, 2024.
Do I have my motion?
Does anyone have any comments about the minutes?
I do. There is one motion that's missing, that's not represented in the minutes, and I thought maybe we could either add it or bring these minutes back to us.
Can you clarify?
Is that okay? Bring it back?
Yeah. Could you clarify the, like, sorry, just to help me?
Yes, I think there was a motion specific to the CEQA 32 infill.
Okay.
It's the very first motion, I think.
We can do that, we can look at that and then, oh, get that back to you.
Okay. A little...
Could we take a little pause for a second?
Yeah, we had a break.
Yes, a five-minute break, or two-minute break.
We just decided that there was a change.
Yeah, we decided that she would bring it back to us.
Sorry.
Okay, that's okay. Okay, with that, I believe no one wishes to speak out on anything that's not on the agenda. I will close that part of the public hearing. And we will then move into our first public hearing item, 1A, Fiscal Year 2024-25 Capital Improvement Program: General Plan Local Coastal Program Consistency.
Good evening, Commission, and members of the public. I'm Maz Bozreginia, Public Works Director and City Engineer. I'm here with Assistant Engineer Jonathan Wu tonight to present the update to the Capital Improvement Program for Fiscal Year 2024-25 for finding of general plan conformance. The recommendation tonight is to review the Fiscal Year 2425 CIP for general plan consistency, and then, secondly, adopt a resolution, which is Attachment 1 of the staff report with the findings that the proposed CIPs contained in the long-range five-year plan are consistent with the city's general plan and local land use plan.
Through the chair. Is there a presentation?
Oh, here it is.
Okay.
I'm sorry, is it showing up?
It is now.
Okay. So, a little background for folks that may not be aware, what is a capital improvement program? It is a tool that a lot of jurisdictions utilize to identify current and future needs to enhance the quality of life and experience for visitors and residents of a jurisdiction, and it provides three primary benefits. One of it is to facilitate the scheduling of improvements over multiple years. It provides for orderly management of capital projects with consistency with general plan and adopted master plans, and it also enhances the city's eligibility for grants from state, federal, and local grant programs. The city of Heflin Bay's capital improvement program is divided into two different categories, or two different types. One is a project, which is something generally large, one-time project, and once it's complete, whether it's a multi-year project or a single year, once it's complete, then that project comes off the list. Programs are more ongoing to meet certain needs of capital maintenance and replacement of facilities, and those priorities may change from year to year, but it's more of an ongoing annual type of effort versus a one-time project. And then, within the CIP itself, it's broken down into eight separate categories, including stormwater, economic development, operations, city parks, facilities, sanitary sewers, streets, and trails. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Jonathan to go through some of our highlights from 2023-24, and then roll into the 2425 project highlights.
Thank you, Maz. So, there's a few projects that we've completed throughout the fiscal year of '23 and '24. First one on the list that we've done was the Public Works Corporation Yard. Although this was completed sometime later of last year, it's something we want to bring up and just mention that it's one of our accomplishments that we've completed. Another project is our Main Street Safety Improvements Project, which is a slurry ceiling project with bike lanes that we've done on Main Street, as well as Johnston and Correaz. Another project that we're nearing completion is the Downtown Streetscapes Master Plan. We are planning to bring that back, we're planning to bring that back to council in the very near future, so you'll hear a little bit more about that. But this should really, we're marking this as an accomplishment, even though we should be completing this sometime, and hopefully in July. Another few projects that we've done on the emergency side are Marada Road/Magellan Road, Beach Access Repair Project, the Myrtle Outfall Repair Project, as well as the Seymour Ditch Stabilization Project. These were all emergency projects that we've had to work on during the past storms that we've had from fiscal, from the 2022-2023 winter season. So, we've accomplished a few of those three projects within this past fiscal year. A couple of projects that we're actually currently working on, but also planning to end by this fiscal year are the 2024 Street Resurfacing Project, as well as the 2024 Sidewalk Replacement Project. Both of those projects include locations throughout city limits, and it's a little bit sporadic, so it's a little tough to tell at specific spots that we've completed. A few project highlights that we're coming into this next fiscal year is our Urban Watershed Management Plan. And what we're planning to do with that, instead of looking at the whole city as one entire scheme, our intention is to break down the city into multiple watersheds and focus on those individually. Definitely, if you guys have questions, you can always reach out to us about that, a little bit more in-depth, but just the high-level side of that kind of plan. Next one we're working on is our Smithfield Parks Improvement, Phase 1 of that specifically. And what, we have a potential donor in sight, too, so we're trying to work with them, as well as work with our team to iron out design and go through a coastal development permitting process with that. And that should be, hopefully, coming to you within this next fiscal year. Another project that we're working on currently, under construction, I'm not, I'm unsure if you guys have noticed, but Poplar Street from Main Street to Highway 1, we're doing complete street element improvements there, currently under construction, and we're hoping for completion within the next few months, around September, October of this, later on this year. Another project that we are currently working on that is nearing construction, we're just finalizing a few things with Caltrans at this moment, is our Highway 1 Safety North Project, which includes a Class 1 multi-use trail from Main Street all the way to Spindrift Road, as well as installing a new signal light on Terrace Avenue. A couple of other projects that we're also working on that's nearing construction, I'm going to skip to the next one, is the East Side Parallel Trail North Segment 4 Project, which is the north side of town from Roosevelt all the way to Marada Road. That's also implementing a Class 1 multi-use path. Going back, back one is the same trail, Segment 2, which is from Spindrift to Rousseau-Français, would be kind of the final link of the East Side Parallel Trail from pretty much north Main Street all the way to the north end of town. And we received a $2 million grant, or a federal earmark, to start to design an environmental process for that project. Another project that we're working on at this moment, and will continue on through this next fiscal year, is the Safe Streets for All Project, or Safe Streets for All Study, which we'll also call the Local Road and Safety Plan. Basically, pans out the entirety of Half Moon Bay and finding locations, just trying to make it a safer area. The final highlight that we're working on is the Highway 1 South Corridor Study, which is another grant that we received through the TA, and it's going to look through safety improvements along Highway 1 from Highway 92 all the way to the south side of town.
Thank you, Jonathan. I just wanted to highlight a couple of other elements here. So, for the Safe Streets for All Study, that's looking at local roads specifically, so that'll be a robust public outreach process as well to listen, to hear from residents with respect to any safety issues that have been out there. We have a number of information and inquiries already from the past number, a couple of years, and so we would like to, we'll be getting more information on that, and that actually sets us up nicely for future grant applications as well. There are certain funding sources, through MTC, for example, that require a local road safety plan, so it's a very important document to get us in position to do that. And I think Jonathan mentioned this, but the Highway 1 South Corridor Study specifically was also a funded, grant-funded project with the Semitiko County Transit Authority, and the purpose of that study is to look at the limits of Highway 1, south of 92 to the southern city limits, and that would also nicely set us up for a study that we could provide to the state, the Caltrans, with respect to some of the issues and safety concerns we have, as well as addressing additional amenities such as parallel trails east and west side of Highway 1. And again, it's another, it's another item that'll set us up, set the community up for potential grant opportunities in the future. So, with that, we have an attachment. I won't, we won't read through the entire list, but, you know, this is, this attachment lists all the different projects and programs with respect to the CIP. We won't go through in a lot of details, but I do want to mention, there's been a couple of comments with respect to the capital improvement program tonight that we've received from community members. I did, and so I, if it's okay, I'd like to just mention those couple of conversations. So, the first one was with Mr. Jimmy Benjamin. I met with Jimmy Benjamin earlier today to discuss some of the concerns that he raised with respect to the CIP, and it was, it was really about the one project, about Pulisio's Outfall Repair. That's a project that is in the vicinity of his home, and we've been working closely with Mr. Benjamin on that project. I think there are some, there are some other older CIP documents that are a little bit out of date with respect to some of the language, so I had a conversation with him, and we're going to make some, we're going to make sure that that's updated and reflected accurately for the, for the description of the project itself. And then, I also received a comment from Mr. Nagangas, and I had a quick second to chat with him earlier today with respect to the Highway 1 South Corridor Study. We do have it listed under the trails, I think that was an error, apologies on that front. It should be more, it should be in the streets category, because that Highway 1 South Corridor Study looks at the entire Highway 1 corridor. Trails are a component, we could look at those amenities to come out of that study, but because of the scope of it, it makes more sense for it to be in the streets, so we'll make sure that that gets, that gets moved over to the right category. But yes, that, that study will look at safety enhancements of the Highway 1 corridor, amenity improvements for the south side, from 92 to the south side of the city limits, which would include Kelly Avenue, Poplar Street intersection, Redondo Beach Road intersection, every, every one of them within that corridor segment itself. So, yeah, we'll, I'll, we'll go through a couple more of these slides. Again, I won't read off them in detail, but we're, we're happy to provide any responses, any questions and inquiries, and then ultimately, we're really looking for the recommendation for approval of this. We are planning to take this document next week to the city council as part of the full budget package, so the consistency finding is a necessary item before that can be adopted. And that's it for, with respect to our presentation. We're happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I would like to first invite anyone from the public to speak out before we go into clarifying questions, and I think I have one speaker card from Paul Nagangas.
Thank you, Chair, Commissioners, Paul Nagangas, Half Moon Bay. Thank you, Maz, for clearing up about the South Corridor Study. Of course, I will try to chime in. I think we already identified two projects, Kelly Avenue and Redondo Beach Road. My thinking would not need a study, I think you should be able to probe those in. But my other question was concerning, what's a program versus a project? And we talked a little bit, and I think program, a much different way than we used to do CIPs, much better, because you have more flexibility to put projects in, in a program. But I would say Highway 1 North, when I saw that, I knew that was probably the Terrace Signal and up to Spindrift. I think you're going to have to start looking north of that. And I know the plans, at one point, there was maybe a signal at Roosevelt Boulevard, so perhaps at some point, maybe start looking at that, or common turn lanes into the county, and I would even suggest partnering with county on the Marada or beyond road potential projects, which I know the TA, Transportation Authority, and Caltrans love to see partnerships in funding, so, thank you.
Thank you, and I see we have one virtual hand raised.
Mike, you're next, with Mike on the line.
Couple of things.
Oops. Hold on, Mike, Mike, hold on a second, something's not right with the mic. Not sure what. The mic's showing that it's working, so I don't know why it's coming in just from my computer and not the surround sound. We know you're there, Mike, it's coming out of here and not the surround, so.
Check out the audio.
It looks, it looks right. I can just put my mic on him. Let me just try, go ahead and start talking, Mike, and you can start over, go ahead.
Yes, hello, Commissioners. I hope you're able to hear me, and are you?
Yeah, let's just hold off for just a second. I'm sorry, we're, it all looks right, but it's not, so just one, one moment. Okay, Mike, go ahead, you can start.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is Mike Ferreira. Am I heard this time?
Yes, you are, thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, I'd like to express appreciation to former Director Nagangas for bringing up the issue of Redondo Beach Road. Some 20 years ago, we told a project applicant that there would be no project without fixing the Redondo Beach Road intersection from a safety standpoint. There also, of course, is Redondo Beach Road itself, which is kind of really a disgrace. Beyond that, Marada Road is sort of a nightmare, because you don't have just two jurisdictions, i.e. Caltrans and the city, you also have the county. So, whenever you have multiple governmental organizations, things take a long time, but perhaps if you have a focus on the need to do something at Marada Road, we can work against that and try to actually get it done. My last comment is regarding the ballfields. One of the alternatives there is for artificial turf. The California Polity, if you will, is turning against that, and city after city is rejecting artificial turf because of its dangers to health and to the environment. It's lousy with PFAS, the runoff contaminates everything around it, and the stuff has to be recycled, but it doesn't actually recycle. It goes into the dump hole after a relatively short period of time, generally 10 years. There's also extreme heat on the surfaces. Maybe in Half Moon Bay is not as dangerous as it is in inland areas, but it's, it's a factor. So, I would hope that there's some forestalling of that as an option, so that we don't get too far down that path before we can turn around. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one more online. James Benjamin, you can unmute.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, and good evening, Commissioners and staff. It's nice to see you. I'm sorry that you can't see me, it's probably nicer that way. I'm Jimmy Benjamin at 400 Pulisio Savinay, and I appreciate the comments from Maz, and wanted to thank him publicly for the opportunity to speak with him. I realize that the Plenary Commission's job is not to choose which projects get consideration, only whether they are consistent with the general plan, and I realize that you don't get to decide which projects get more funding or less, or whether they're getting what they need. I'm sure we all have strong feelings about that in different ways. I would like to just comment, I noted that former Mayor Ferreira mentioned earlier about Redondo Beach Road 20 years ago, and I appreciate seeing the projects related to the Kehoe Water Course and its watershed, and the adjacent watershed that is adding water to it, as the subject of the, within the capital improvement plan, project plan. The first time I talked to the city about this, I was 46 years old. I'm now 65 years old, and I haven't seen anything except degradation. I admire the alacrity with which the city has been able to act on projects that are a priority to it, and I can only hope that one day soon, that the projects related to this watershed will become such a priority, and that that will be reflected less in words and more in money. So, thank you again for your service and for your consideration of this CIP.
Thank you.
I see no other online.
Okay, with this, I'll take it to our commission. I would like to ask Commissioner Gorn if you have any clarifying questions.
I have none.
Commissioner Riddick? Commissioner Hernandez?
I do. I was recently using the bike trail on the east side of Highway 1 near, starting in El Granada, working my way down, and ended up in a dead end near Medio, and had to turn around and go back to El Granada. And I noticed that between Rocket Farms and Medio, there's no trail, and I don't think there's any plan in here to address that trail. Can you speak to what's happening with that segment, and when that's going to be completed, and if that's the city's responsibility or the county's responsibility?
Sure, I'm happy to do so. I think if you're, you're speaking with the section between the county trail and Rocket Farms, right. So, we do actually have a project, we kind of glossed over it, but the East Side Parallel Trail North Segment 4 is that linkage, and that project is actually really close to construction as well. We have some final, we have, we have some final approvals from regulatory agencies and Caltrans necessary, but we're hopeful that we can go out to construction in this next fiscal year to get that done.
Outstanding. The, just wanted to make sure I understood, going back to the Kehoe Water Course project... The, just wanted to make sure I understood, going back to the Quah Water Course project and the questions raised about outfalls, so not necessarily directly tied to Quah, but the outfall issues that Dr. Benjamin brought up. You're changing the language to address the fact that you're going to dissipate the water. You're not just going to allow it to go through. Is that correct?
That's part of the conversation and what we're looking at as far as the scope. There is an immediate repair for the outfall itself that's necessary. I think the comments from Mr. Benjamin are related to long-term and high-velocity flows during peak storms, and so that's a secondary item that we can look into. We have that Quah watershed management program in the CIP. That would be to look at a bigger, broader project, which would address a lot of that, which would be looking at alternative ways of conveying that stormwater and not keeping it all in that same water course itself.
Is it, and there's a lot of detail there, is it fair to say that that's more of a study versus a substantial project?
It would be, I think it would be a study and design that would morph into a bigger project.
Okay, because 19 years seems like a long time for... There's a lot of history here, and I don't need you to, we don't need to get into it, but it's an area of concern, given that the city's past involvement on the losing side on litigation on this project. I just hope that that's something that gets the right level of attention.
Agreed.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a much more basic question. Can you describe for the public and for me to understand the difference between a program and a project and what is the fundamental difference and why is it being distinguished?
Sure. So the projects are really one-time identifiable projects. So for example, I'll use examples because I think that makes it really clear. So the Poplar Complete Street Phase One is a project because that is a, that we're going in and we're going to, the city's coming forward with physical improvements and modifications, and once that's complete, that project will come off the CIP list itself. Obviously, street maintenance and sidewalk maintenance will still be things that the city and Public Works will maintain and do, but to redo that segment of the street would not be something we'd do multiple times. And then we have a, from the program side, what we look at is specifically things that are more routine and annual. So for example, we have our, we've been starting to do our street maintenance program, and so we've been doing last two and a half, the last three years, this is, I think, our third year of doing an annual project where we go and identify some of the streets that need pavement maintenance with respect to the pavement condition index and as well as community feedback and concerns. And so that's something that we keep on the CIP as a program. And so basically, the title of it won't really change. It'll be another, the next year. So next year, we'll have a 2025 program, but the elements of the program change because, again, we will look at other areas within the city that may need pavement restoration. And so from that perspective, it would be an ongoing reoccurring project.
Okay, just to clarify in my head, so programs are, generally speaking, a maintenance program. It's the city's annual maintenance program versus a CIP project is a budgeted project that has been slated for certain work to be done for reconstruction, you know, something that is major. So this generally, this is not necessarily a CIP program, meaning like a five-year CIP. It's the city's maintenance, regular maintenance program, and that can be, and then there's things within that program that can be hastened or prioritized as necessary as a need comes. So if there's this street, let's just say, I don't know where Redondo Beach Road would be on this in the program, and maybe you can expand, but is that a CIP project or is this, would that be just part of the city's maintenance program?
I think if, it really depends. I think the Redondo Beach Road one is a good example to utilize where it could be either one, because if we're looking at just maintaining the existing street section itself and repairing it back to a usable condition, that would be, that would fall under a program. But if we're looking at the addition of, for example, a walking trail, then that would be something a little bit above and beyond just ongoing maintenance, so then that would be, then you could, I would categorize that as a project in that scenario. With respect to our, with Redondo Beach Road, since it's been mentioned, I do want to just say that we did have, we were finally able to go in there after quite a bit of rain and get some base material out there and at least stabilize the roadway itself. We are looking at implementing that as part of our ongoing program, looking at it potentially in 2025. And if it becomes bigger than just a pavement restoration, then yeah, then that would be a project.
And one other thing, the trail that runs along, I guess, the Poplar Beach Trail, the one that goes east-west, it seems to be kind of deteriorating. I know you had a capital improvement project there recently. Is that anywhere on the maintenance program, the CIP program list?
Yes, that, yes. So that we did do a project recently. We do have that as part of our trail maintenance program. We were hoping to do that this year, but with the storm-related damages, we were not able to get to that particular project, but that is on our immediate horizon to fill up the cracks. And actually, the design of that project is to come back and do an overlay and build the structural section up from where we are. So that is on our list, and we're hoping to get to that in the next fiscal year.
Thank you.
I would like to ask a question about that same east-west trail at Poplar. Right after it was installed, it started to degrade. Does the contractor insure these projects? Because I don't believe the city actually did the work, but you subcontract that. So I was just wondering if they insure that so that the city doesn't have to pay twice?
Generally speaking, yes, the projects do require warranty bonds after construction. Generally, they last for about a year. This location did deteriorate within that year. Not, it didn't take, it was about, it was within the first 12 months. And in this particular one, I think it was more of a design-related decision. I wouldn't even say mistake. I would say decision because there was the opportunity to go down and dig out more material and build this up, and that would have had its own costs and impacts in the initial construction. So the way we've designed this project is to come in and actually add lifts to the section itself. So when we come back for this maintenance program, we're looking at doing a crack seal. We have a fiberglass grid mesh that we put on top of it, and then we would roll out another inch, inch and a half of asphalt on the top. So that's, our intent is to look at building this structural section up, which is why we didn't go after the designer, or it was a decision we made, knowing that otherwise the project would have been double the initial cost. And so that was something that we decided to move forward with in that manner.
Thank you. Does anyone else on the commission? Hazel, go ahead.
I do have a follow-up. Speaking of ensuring, you know, the work of a contractor, the Poplar Street project that's going on right now, I'm hearing rumblings that there might be some issues with the design of that project, and the same type of thing might occur, you know, deterioration might occur quicker, like the east-west Poplar Trail. I'm wondering if you have heard anything about that and if you could comment and have you got, is that, what I'm asking, is that design solid? And, you know, how is that going to end up in two years from now?
If I might just help clarify, have you made other shortcuts so that we could get the project approved in a reasonable budget? Is there some other trade-off that's been made on Poplar Street that we should be aware of where it might deteriorate more quickly?
No, great questions, no. So the parallel pathway, the main takeaway from that was the large wet open space and the storms that we had. There was quite a bit of expansion and contraction with stormwater and the storms that we received. On Poplar Street Phase One, it's, and even Phase Two, it's a little bit different. You know, we don't go beyond railroad for Phase Two, for example. And so it's a little bit of a different environment, and on Phase One specifically, we're within the developed area, and the design is, the design took all of that into account with the grant that we have for that project. So I, no, we, I don't anticipate the same level of necessity as far as building up the structural section as we planned for the east side, as we planned for the Poplar Trail between railroad and the access.
Does anyone else wish to comment about this before we move on to a motion for this?
I found this on the web.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm happy to make a motion.
Thank you.
So we have Resolution Number P24. Do want to note that we need to change the date on the resolution to today's date from the 28th of May, but I'd like to make a resolution that we, the Planning Commission of the City of Half Moon Bay, that we find the fiscal year 2024, 2025 capital improvement program consistent with our general plan.
I second it.
Will you take a roll call?
Commissioner Ruddick?
Yes.
Commissioner Gorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Vice Chair Johannes?
Yes.
And Chair Gossett?
Yes.
Motion approved.
With that, we will move on to Item 1B, the ballot measure amending Measure D, the city voter-approved residential growth limitations program.
Thank you, Maz. Thank you, Jonathan.
Good evening, Honorable Chair and Planning Commissioners. My name's Okowi Wilson. I'm the Assistant Planner, and I'm here with John Doughty, our Assistant City Manager. Today, we are bringing to you a proposed ballot measure to, for ADUs and affordable housing to amend sections of our local coastal land use plan as well as our zoning ordinance. So we're bringing this to you today because of those amendments. The Planning Commission is required to provide a recommendation in advance of any city council resolution action. A little background on today's item, in February 2024, the city council held their listening sessions, and there was some community feedback received that expressed a need to modify Measure D, the city's growth management program, to address accessory dwelling units. In March, on March 14th this year, the city council held their annual priority setting for the fiscal year 2425, where they identified the ballot measure to address these needs as a priority. Following at the next regularly scheduled city council meeting, staff presented potential options to the council, and following that meeting, council directed staff to prepare a ballot measure to add exemptions and modify the downtown area boundary associated with Measure D. So Measure D is the city's growth management system. It was adopted by voters in 1999 and became effective in 2009, following Coastal Commission certification. Currently, it has, since it's been approved and became effective in 2009, it has accommodated up to 1.5% of population growth annually. This is split between a downtown area and an outside of downtown area, which we'll get more into later. And within the downtown area, that's a 1% growth, population growth annually, and outside of downtown, 0.5%. Currently, the downtown area within Measure D is defined as the Half Moon Bay redevelopment survey area, which was adopted in November 1998. It currently has two exemptions associated with the provisions of Measure D. This includes replacement of existing dwelling units on a one-for-one basis and exemptions for density bonus units associated with California state law. And the original text of Measure D can be found as an attachment to the staff report. The amendments that are being proposed with this ballot measure would include exempting accessory dwelling units from Measure D and exempting D restricted affordable lower-income units. It would also amend the downtown area map. And these amendments would be to the local coastal land use plan as well as the zoning One of the sections of the zoning ordinance that would be amended is Section 1804010. In this section, it would amend the downtown area to become the town center, which is Figure 2-2 in the local coastal land use plan. And again, I'll provide a map for you guys to see later on. The other section of the zoning ordinance that would be amended with this measure would be Section 1804030, and here's where we have the exemptions. That would include the existing exemptions and then include the exemptions for ADUs and affordable units. Within the local coastal land use plan, this would then amend section or policy 2-16, and that includes both the exemptions for accessory dwelling units and affordable units as well as the amendments to the downtown area. So the reason that we are looking at this ballot measure is because there's become an increased focus on ADUs within the city of Half Moon Bay and across the state. And when this measure was initially implemented back in 1999, when it was voted in and then again effective in 2009, the amount of ADUs were not anticipated with that initial ballot measure. Since then, the city has updated its zoning ordinances in 2018 and 2022 to include additional provisions for ADUs. And since then, that's when we began seeing an increase in the number of ADUs being applied for with Measure D. And since then, consistently, the number of allocations being applied for outside of downtown has been exceeding what is available, and ADUs are making up a significant portion of these allocation requests. State law continues to provide or mandate provisions for ADUs, and that's not anticipated to change, to minimize ADUs anytime soon. Additionally, the community has expressed a need for additional affordable housing opportunities, and city council as well has made this a priority, as well as the Planning Commission expressed prior to the 2020 land use update, that affordable housing was also a priority. As well as, we're working on the housing element, and when looking at the regional housing needs allocations, which the housing element sets goals to achieve, there's an additional 285 lower-income units still anticipated to be needed with that. This is some data relating to the Measure D allocations from 2020 through 2024. Some of this data, though it's been updated since the city council meeting, was provided at that meeting. As you can see, there continues to be a need for ADUs being applied for, and since 2020, approximately 37 ADUs have been rejected from receiving allocations, 37. And this year, that made up 14 of them in 2024 alone.
I'm sorry, do you mean housing Measure Ds were rejected, not ADUs?
That was specific for ADUs.
Okay.
Correct, yeah. We do have some numbers relating to other units, specifically, I think, an additional approximate... additional approximately, this is a very approximate number, but 60 additional units may have been accommodated, uh, had ADUs not been, or had been exempt previously.
60 additional units of housing?
Yeah.
Great.
Could we please spend another moment on that chart? It's not very legible.
And, and I would like to, I remember from this year of the 14 rejected, one requested, one was a single family home with an ADU that had a variance request.
So this, um, chart is just looking at the ADUs associated with the single families. Uh, you are correct that-
I mean, so that really is not like a valid even request, given that someone's asking for a variance on a project that, um, is, it puts them way below the line with a measure D request. But anyway, we could talk about that later.
Yeah, we can get into that with the discussion if you have any other clarifying questions on that. I would be happy to try to clarify that.
Thank you.
But yeah, I can explain the chart a little bit more as well. Um, you'll see that the total number of allocations available each year is going to be that first column. Uh, we've actually seen a decline in that number. Um, and then you can see that the number of ADUs requested that were ADUs only were pretty high in those first initial years when, um, we had passed new provisions within the zoning ordinance, um, and it's kind of steadied out since then, uh, but it still continues to be a high demand, uh, within the 2024 allocations. All applications received included an ADU except for one.
So just to be clear, in 2024, there were 63 measure D allocations available and the number of units not receiving allocations over multiple years was four. Is that right?
Correct, yeah. So that would take into account ones from back beyond typical 2020 typically, before then we didn't have this issue. Uh, so these, this slide is going to show you the current downtown map, which is that redevelopment survey from 1998. Uh, you can see highlighted in red on that map, those are areas that would be included with the town center map that are not currently included within the scope of the downtown area. And then in blue, on that top left corner, that would no longer be part of the downtown area. Uh, the, this town center map was adopted with the 2020 comprehensive local coastal land use plan. Uh, it is considered to be more reflective of the community's perception of the downtown. It strives to focus on a more walkable core area, um, and then also would further support, um, infill within the downtown area, which is one of the goals of measure D, um, with having that, those additional allocations in the downtown area. Uh, and this map would also just align our measure D provisions more with our certified local coastal land use plan.
Since you have this map up, can I ask quickly, I'm sorry, does the Podesta property, is it included? I mean, cause it's outlined really dark and black.
Is that the, the top, top left? Oh, um, yes, that, the yellow, red and blue areas that are shaded are all included in that town center map. The coloring, um, my apologies, the legend isn't included on this, but the coloring is for the three different identified neighborhoods. So you would have the heritage downtown in red, uh, the south downtown in blue, and then I believe it's considered the north downtown in yellow, um, up top.
So you see my cursor on the screen? So this is the yellow here?
Okay.
And then this area right here is red?
Okay.
And then the following bottom here is blue.
Okay, and the following bottom is included in the town, new town center map? Is that what is being proposed?
Yeah, all the, all the coloring basically west-
So I just want to clarify that the commissioners aren't seeing the colors clear as we are. Um, so I'm just trying to help them. Um, we've had some background technical challenges, so I'm just trying to clarify. Thank you.
Could I ask a follow-up clarifying question on this point?
Map is confused.
Yeah, so I, I think I understand the north downtown, the south downtown and the historic, or the heritage downtown are all included. I think the problem is that the map that you reference in figure 2-2, it's, it's difficult to understand exactly where the borders stop and start. So what, is it possible to include a map in the, um, in the ballot measure that we're putting forth so people can visibly see exactly that's clear? Cause this map isn't clear. Is that something that could be done?
I believe, and maybe John can clarify, that we will, would include a map, um, within the ballot measure and I'm, I think it would be a reasonable consideration to update it.
Attached to the ballot measure?
Yeah, it is currently attached to the proposed ballot measure.
This, this map?
This map specifically, yes.
They're really trying to mess with me. No green light.
It, it's, it's not in the resolution and so, um-
It's a part of attachment A to, um, the resolution to, to exhibit A. So if you, um, page six of the ballot measure includes figure 2-2, which is the town center. But we wanted to keep the, you know, our objective was to try to, much like with the redevelopment map, to have a reference point back to, um, an LCP document, which is figure 2-2. So if there's ever a question, you don't have to go to necessarily to the initiative to know that it's figure 2-2 and you can go look at the LCP. Now, we have to be obviously very careful about amending and modifying figure 2-2 in the future to make sure we then reflect it here or not, but, but that's, that was the reason for, for that. If that helps.
So I, I guess the resolution doesn't reference figure 2-2 that we're signing off on. So can we add a modification? Would it be possible to modify the resolution to include figure 2-2?
The, I, certainly we could do that.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for the interruption. Go ahead, please continue.
All good. Um, so yeah, the next steps would be upon recommendation, um, by the planning commission, the city council would review the proposed ballot measure at their July 16th, 2024 regularly scheduled meeting. Uh, should, uh, city council adopt a resolution to place the measure on the ballot, uh, it would be on the November 5th, 2024 general election ballot. At that point, if it's approved by voters, it would then be forwarded to the California Coastal Commission for certification, uh, and then staff would just continue to coordinate with HCD and the Coastal Commission throughout the process. Uh, staff's recommendation today, uh, would be to adopt a resolution recommending the city council place a measure on the November 5th, 2024 general election ballot, proposing amendments of measure D, uh, our residential growth-
I wouldn't, you don't need to-
Yeah. I know, I was trying to-
Don't.
But, um, the alternative option would be for the planning commission, um, may choose to not recommend the city council not place a ballot measure on the November 5th general election ballot. It would still be reviewed by the city council at their July 16th meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Back to my non-green light. So Chair Gossett, um, had reached out to, um, Steve McHarris and, um, had raised an important issue, which was, um, the accessory dwelling unit survey, um, that had been, um, done by staff, um, a few months ago. And, um, I, staff was hesitant to include it simply because it was not, um, a scientific analysis and I did not want to be, um, accused and, um, and staff accused of trying to, um, pull one over anyone with that deal with an unscientific analysis. But, um, we think it, it's important information and had planned to bring it here tonight, um, in this context. So, uh, this pretty much walks you through, I will, um, I, I think, um, in the end, um, we had 73 ADUs that were either constructed, um, occupied and/or vacant or were under construction. Basically nine were under construction, so 63 completed ADUs out there. And that's what the table with the shading, um, reflects is just, um, pieces of, um, of that mix. We have 20 ADUs in that mix of the, um, 53 that responded to, um, to our inquiries. Um, and we did, uh, this, I, I should point out, this was staff, uh, member going to the sites. This was not a letter sent out to them asking for this. Staff physically went to the sites, knocked on the door, said, hey, this is what we're trying to do. We're trying to get some information. Part of the question, obviously, driving this was, in great part, who's in the, who's in the ADU? Are they renting? And how many folks are in the ADU? And obviously, measure D was always developed around the issue of, of, uh, a cap on the number of basically the population, the back door. Because of the, well, I, I see disagreement, but, but that's ultimately how you derive it because the reason why, for example, when we looked at the numbers and why your allocations are going down, because the persons per household is going up and that is directly reflective then in a reduction in the number of allocations that are granted. So measure D is tied directly to population growth, which also is tied to concurrency of infrastructure. Understanding that piece too. So the bottom line kind of takeaways on this one for, um, that I would say is that right now, your average persons per household is 2.86 and that's what was used in the 2024, um, measure D report and allocations. And, um, when you average out the reports from this survey, you're at 1.75 persons per ADU household, meaning that they are significantly fewer people in this survey. And again, not a scientific analysis, but this is what has been designed around whether they're restricted by deed or whether they're restricted by size and by nature, this was always the design around the accessory dwelling units and how the state has evolved over the last 20 years to the point where we are, um, with ADUs. So that's a big takeaway, obviously, that there, there are less persons per household in these, which makes, um, some sense. And, um, ultimately, the other key takeaways, you can pretty much read for yourself, but obviously there's opportunities to, to downsize. We found a number of folks who were moving to the ADU from their main home and allowing their family members or in some instances, I'm sure renting, but I think in most and many instances, their family members coming into the larger home with, with, with children and families. Um, that basically there are rental opportunities, um, being provided through these and, um, and that's important because that's a key component to the housing, um, equation. The ADUs are providing opportunities for multi-generational and again, back to this point of, of some of those situations in which whether the families, um, whether the, the younger, um, generation is in the ADU or in the main house, it doesn't really matter. There's a multi-generational family connection there. Um, and ultimately, what we've seen throughout the materials, um, and, and the analysis, um, is the ADUs have become part of the fabric of this community and many communities across the state, um, by necessi, by necessity and by design, um, in part by this city and part by the states directed, um, on that. But it is part of that and it's a critical piece and you've been through, um, the draft housing element and recognize that, that this is a, um, key piece to meeting, um, our objectives of the regional housing needs assessment and, um, number of, of units. Happy to try to answer any questions, but you can, you know, this, uh, there was data and, um, and we're certainly happy to provide more of the background data, but I, um, wanted to just acknowledge that we had done this work and I think it's good work, um, but, and we'd like to continue to sort of update it and, and get back out and, and check and see where, where things are as we move down the road.
Thank you.
Could I ask a question about the chart at this point or? John, um, it's interesting data. What's the definition of total ADUs occupied?
Well, we had basically other respondents, 27. Now, some people chose not to respond and that's, that's why these numbers are difficult and that's why I hesitated to put these in there because we did not, we do not have 53 responded to and they gave us answers on all of the issues. So a number of the folks said, I'm not comfortable answering the question about how many people are living in the ADU. So this is an incomplete analysis and number, um, and again, why I was, uh, you know, concerned, um, with, with even putting it out there, but it's information.
Well, I understand that. Could we have the chart back in front of us for a moment, please?
Which one?
The informal survey.
Oh.
So I, I ask the definition of total occupied because if I add the renters plus the family ones, it seems lar, a bigger number than total occupied. So I'm a little confused what total occupied means.
Maybe if I could say it a slightly different way, like, how, how many, how many people are living in the ADUs for people that, you had 53 people responded. How many people are living in the 53 responses in those units? Do we have a sense of what that is? Is it one, two, 10?
What is it? What's the, like, what are total ADUs occupied mean? What does that mean?
What, we had a response on this and you're affirming why I did not actually want to put this and why it was not included in the staff report because it is not perfect information. The number that we have is 24 units that reported having someone living in the unit and 42 people living in those 24 units, which equates to 1.75 persons if you average that out with that.
Just for the ADUs?
Just for those ADUs, yes.
Well, I'm, I'm not asking a hostile question. I'm just looking, it says, uh, total ADUs rented is 12, total ADUs to family members is 20. If I add those together, I get 32 and so it makes me wonder what total occupied 27, how that, how that is consistent with the rest of the data.
This is a totally non-legal, um, but this is like a logic puzzle. I'm going to suggest that maybe several people rented to their family members and that's why it got double counted between those that are rented and those that are occupied by family members. That's just my logic puzzle solution, but I don't know, um, if that's based on the facts.
I suspect you're correct on that one. I apologize. I, you know, this was, um, again, it's, I struggle with, I struggle with the information, um, just in the way it was compiled.
It's interesting information and I, I think your, your key takeaways, you know, there's some, they're big conclusions based on very small sample size, but they're not necessarily, uh, useless takeaways.
Well, at this point, maybe we could hold off on clarifying questions until we hear from the public because we have sort of, and I sort of led us there, so I apologize for starting it. So public comment, at first, we would like to hear from Paul Nagangast and then after that, uh, Paul McGregor.
Thank you, Paul Nagangast, Half Moon Bay. I'm not sure who said measure D was a backdoor- I'm not sure who said Measure D was a backdoor population growth control. I take offense to that, if that's exactly how it's being viewed, and how can you have a clear writing of information, if that's ideologically how you think this was? To me...
Wait, Paul, wait one moment, please. Your mic isn't on.
Oh, maybe, that's good.
Is this better? Okay. I will repeat it then. The whole, the whole thing about backdoor population growth control is offensive. I mean, I remember the hard work that went into Measure D. And Measure D is not a no-growth ordinance. It was put in place in order to manage growth. You have to manage growth. Otherwise, you have some of the crazy things that were going on during the 80s, early 90s, these certain corridors. It was just way too much growth, and the infrastructure never caught up. By having a managed growth ordinance, a community such as Half Moon Bay as an outpost can manage its growth. Look how one pothole, and it was a big pothole on Highway 92, what that did to this community, it just, it just shut everything down. Remember when the tunnel, before the tunnel, the double slide? When that would just shut down, everybody came through here. We now are seeing, we had water during the drought, not enough water. We've had to change our landscaping. We see the sand plant have, during storm events, have overflows. We know there's coastal retreat. It needs to be moved. So I would make sure that you're very careful on how you propose any type of language to change Measure D. This wasn't something that just was thought up in the 90s to try and stop growth. This was, this means a lot to a lot of people in this community. Now, granted, things change. And for anybody to have an unscientific survey to try and squeeze through through pretzel logic to say, this is how ADUs are used, you shouldn't have put it up. I don't even know what that means up there, and then you actually acknowledge saying, I don't know. What I think you should do is make sure it's very clear, and if you do propose a measure language, that people know what a yes vote means or a no vote means. And what is a yes vote? Is everybody going to build an ADU in their backyards? We know what ADUs are. There's no parking requirements. I'm not saying that's bad or good, but the community needs to understand that. Things are going to change. I know things are changing now, and we are evolving or regressing, depends on your viewpoint, but whatever happens with water, sewer, I think the full impacts of any changes to Measure D should be known. And again, this wasn't some growth measure to keep people out of town. It was something that meant a lot to a lot of people. I remember watching it when the, trying to get the Coastal Commission to finally approve it. It was a big deal, and I think we need to treat it as a big deal and make sure the community is very aware of what a yes or a no vote means. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay, so there's a joke for the evening. So I have to ask you, does anybody know how many illegal ADUs that there are in the city at this point in time? Is there any number equation for that? Any count? Has there been any research? Just a question. So last night on CBS, Channel 5, contractors research, say, unpermitted ADUs growing issue in the Bay Area. And they go on to talk about accessory dwelling units, or ADUs are among the hottest real estate trends in California, providing a possible solution for the state's housing crisis. But a new Stanford, indicate study by Stanford, a lot of these so-called backyard homes are being built illegally. Researchers, researchers use satellite imagery from San Jose and found that 1,380 is built between 2016 and 2020, an estimated 1,000 were built without permits. So does anybody know what's happening in this town? Do we know how many illegal units that we have at this point in time? That would be a question. And as far as being able to get more affordable housing, why would you take and put the ADUs on the same list as a Measure D or whatever the case may be? We need the housing in this community. You guys previously approved another project right over here, and I'm sure California, you know, pushed you into that situation, but also you have to figure out that there's other people that need housing, too. Family members, other people from this area that work here. I, I'm having a hard time with this because it's so restrictive to build anything anymore. It takes so much time. It could take a year, it could take two years to get a permit. I actually had a property on Highway 1 in Poplar. I tried to put a junior ADU in, and I was number one on the beauty list, but I was told I couldn't have it because of the traffic situation in that corner. You know, we have to look at what we need for housing, and we have to make sure that we can do it professionally without people putting their opinions in and do it on a beauty contest. If you meet the beauty contest standards, you shouldn't be rejected. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we have a few speakers online who wish to speak out.
Yes, the first one I have is Joy, and she's had her hand raised for a while, so I'm not sure if she's part of this, but let's just find out.
Okay.
Joy, did you want to speak on this item?
You may need to unmute your mic.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, just not sure you wanted to speak on the Measure D item?
Yes, I did.
Okay, go ahead.
My name is Joy. I'm a local resident of Half Moon Bay most of my life, and I have a business as of 35 years on Main Street, North Main Street. And I just want to say that I agree with what Paul said about how Measure D was being, the language that was being used to define. The purpose of the ballot measure are to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the residents of Half Moon Bay, and to provide for development which is orderly, sustainable, fiscally responsible, to respond to the worsening traffic situation, and to protect the city's unique scenic and rural coastal character by managing the rate, location, and density of residential development. I'm quoting, by the way. The purpose and intent of Measure D, as specified in the section 16.06.05a and b of Half Moon Bay Municipal Code, is to control the rate and quality of development in the city on an annual basis. With that said, or in mind, we have basically two roads in and out of Half Moon Bay. We have no emergency room, we have no urgent care or hospitals. Our infrastructure is antiquated. Not understanding the push for all this development, but without this key component, it's like putting the horse before the cart. I feel like not in the best interest of our community, and this amendment would open the floodgates for more exemptions. And I wanted to note on the Airbnb's, where they were talking about, you know, multifamily, there was no mention about Airbnb's. And I feel like that would, that these AD, you know, the Airbnb's would further be a problem. So that's about all I have to say. Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous. I'm not used to public speaking. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next, we have, up is Mike Ferrera.
Good evening, Commissioners, again. Thank you for this opportunity. Measure D passed by a wide margin 25 years ago, and it's sort of remarkable how well it's held up. Only in a minority of those years, and fairly recently, have applications been delayed, not quashed, not denied, delayed. Which gets us to the data that was presented to you about the number of ADUs that didn't get approved in a given year. They got delayed to the following year and the following year. It isn't like they go away. It would seem to me that Measure D wisely has provided for density unit bonuses. We're allowed to do phasing agreements if, say, a large development comes along. You probably recall that the 40-unit project required only 10 Measure Ds. We haven't yet looked at Stone Pine in terms of Measure Ds, but that's probably going to be something like 12 or 47. There's plenty of room under Measure D to meet the regional housing needs assessment, which of course is what we're supposed to be looking at. Criticism from HCD, well, you know, they've been squealing for more for all the time I've known about them, even when there was no demand from people for development that could possibly even reach Measure D. So I'm not sure what data the council was looking at. I saw a reference in the staff report back then about the community wants relief from Measure D. I don't think so. Admittedly, sure, there's people who are applicants that might come to the city council and say, oh, my God, Measure D, I might have to wait a year, I might even have to wait two. That's not what should be driving this issue. I think there really needs to be more study. I know that all the planning commissioners are capable of dealing with it about perhaps some other methodologies that might be employed to relieve some of that delay problem. Maybe we need to change some of the ways we look at the beauty contest, et cetera, et cetera. But we're not crippling growth, and let's not forget that if some of the large areas come up, we can use phasing agreements. So I would hope that we're not panicking here, or even that the council isn't panicking, in wanting to put such drastic changes on the ballot for Measure D. I don't think, I don't think they are. I think that they're pretty smart people, they're given the right data, they would defer putting this measure on the ballot until they could look at something that has a little more science to it. I think actually what Mr. Dowdy put up was interesting, but it would be nice if we could get that a little bit deeper and maybe separate ADUs from JADUs to get a better feeling for exactly what's out there and what's likely to be there in the future. So I guess the major thing that I'm asking for here is that I think this planning commission needs more time to go back and forth, get better data, and I really don't think there's a huge urgency to get this on the ballot in 2024. Because the data, as I see it, doesn't drive it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Crystal Lynn from Chamber.
Thank you very much, Planning Commission. I would like to say that the Chamber is pro affordable units and ADUs. It's a wonderful way to get those. I know from my own experience, I live in an ADU. When I got my job, it took me more than six months to find a place on the coast side, which meant I had to commute from Monterey daily. And I know plenty of businesses that have a hard time finding staff because their staff can't live here, and they try to hire staff from out of the area, and then they have to commute, and it's really a big catch 22. Hearing that it can take up to two years for somebody to add an ADU sounds ridiculous. To have somebody have a planning project, and they're ready to go, and they're going to be adding housing for their own family member so they can take care of them, or for one of the families on the coast side that need affordable housing because they work in a local shop, or a business that is not, you know, super, super high paying. We should be working towards trying to house our workforce, and this is a great way to do that. It's really sad that people have been turned away to do ADUs, and I hope that you approve a ballot measure because the voting people are smart people, and they can decide if they would like this type of growth to happen sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. Oh, wait a minute. I spoke too soon. Jimmy Benjamin, go ahead.
Sorry about that. I thought I had raised my hand. I double clicked it and managed to mute myself. So I just wanted to add a little bit. First, I want to compliment Assistant Manager Dowdy. I think it takes a big man to admit the limits of what he knows and can derive from the data. I can be a critic sometimes, but I think it's important to acknowledge things that are done well in these meetings, and that was a moment that I will remember. That said, I think it's really important to characterize the questions that are being asked about Measure D in a couple of ways that may not be straightforward from the analysis. First, these ADUs or these affordable units aren't necessarily affordable in perpetuity. So it is not like we are resolving our problem of having affordable housing. They will age out as the restrictions on affordability go away. This concerns me. I'm also perhaps even more concerned that the city enacted this as an opportunity to respond to the pressures of growth. And I don't think, in many respects, we've done a great job of responding to those pressures. I detailed a couple of those related to geophysics, flooding, erosion, really, erosion is the big one for me. But Joy, an earlier speaker, mentioned her concerns about certain kinds of social programs. And I think it's really important to reflect on what Paul Nagangast said earlier, that Measure D does not stop growth. It gives us an opportunity to develop the infrastructure and become aware of the pressure points before we are inundated, as we so easily are, with concerns that we don't have the funding to address. And this is the reason that I have deep reservations about this project. Of course, the council will do what they're going to do. Your advice is simply advisory. But I hope, after reflecting on these concerns, you'll agree that this ordinance is well-placed, and it's really the right thing for us to keep. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for the public comment. And at this point, I will ask my fellow commissioners if they have clarifying questions, and I'll start with Commissioner Gorn.
Hi, I do have a couple of questions. So I guess my, so there's two things that are going to be, that are on this proposed ballot measure. And one of them is affordable housing projects, like, so, like Stone Pine that we just approved and 555 Kelly that we just approved, the schoolteacher housing that is coming up. All of those projects, they get, right now, exemptions, right? They don't get full exemptions. They don't get exemptions for all their units, but they get exemptions for quite a lot of them. Is that, am I, is that accurate?
Yes and no, Commissioner. Let's take Stone Pine Cove, for example. It's 47 units. There are no density bonuses. Those 47 units took full 47 allocations. A project, let's take 555, had 10 base units, which would require allocations, 30 density bonus, which would not be subject to allocation or Measure D. So it varies, certainly with the density... So it varies, certainly with the density bonus, because under the current exemption, it's only the density bonus units that are exempt from Measure D, not the base number of units.
So 555 Kelly would not be 10 Measure Ds, it would be 30?
It would be 10 Measure Ds, 30 density bonus units, which would not be subject to allocation.
Okay.
And that's, that's, that's an incredibly unique situation, but, but the more likely and more usual situation is you're looking at a 25, 30% density bonus on a project, but 555 is unique.
Right. So, so I guess the other sort of thing that would be exempted is all ADUs. I wanted to know, so, right now, there's a point system, right? Do ADUs get a point for, for being affordable housing?
So currently, there is an item on the Measure D checklist, which is for below-market-rate housing that can be selected, which would require a deed restriction for one of the units that could be an ADU, but isn't necessarily the ADU, if it might be multifamily or include a single family. That box on the Measure D checklist for points is the highest single-point option. It would give them 35 points. Historically, we have seen those who select that box do receive their allocations, but it is minimal how many people we've seen selecting that. So this year, we had one application for a single family with an ADU who selected that and received an allocation, and then we had a project that received five allocations that will be doing below-market-rate housing as well. Other than that, ADUs do get incentivized through the scoring of the Measure D checklist. So in previous years, we have seen ADUs scoring higher, and in 2024, we did see that to some extent, though it was, we did have a large amount of ADUs still fall below the line for this 2024 year.
Okay. So, so some affordable housing projects do get that exemption, and, and the ADUs are incentivized with this point system, is what I'm gathering.
So you can choose what I, you can choose to deed-restrict your unit, and that will get you lots of points and put you, and put you there. And you can apply for an ADU, and there is incentivizing, yes, in terms of just encouraging ADUs, because, again, why are they important? In a great part, because they really fulfill a lot of what Measure D was intended for, which was to use existing infrastructure, develop in a developed areas, save greenfields, and develop in the downtown areas. And so that's why I believe those were incentivized.
So I guess my, so my question is, you know, the city council has directed staff to do, you know, come up with language for a ballot measure, but, but there's really only exemptions, like that's what you, that's what you came up with. So I'm, I guess if they want input for a possible ballot measure, why isn't, have you guys looked into changing that point system? Maybe having two points for an ADU, or half a point for a JADU, or having, maybe like for, for projects that don't get a Measure D one year, maybe they get an additional point? Maybe that, you know, maybe they would get an additional point every year they don't get it. Maybe they get two points, maybe there'd be three points for an ADU. But if what you want is ADUs, it seems like that would be a valid way to encourage ADUs. If there's all these ADUs out there that aren't getting approved because everybody else is getting approved, that seems like, like that's something the city would want to do.
So let me, through the chair, unwind that a little bit. So first and foremost, the council gave us specific direction to address these three issues. This was not staff's analysis and assessment after the council said, why don't you think about fixing Measure D to deal with some of these issues? They specifically identified these. Now, those were specifically laid out as options available to them in the council report that went in March, but they ultimately directed these. So this was not us being sent off to try to figure out, and this is the best we could come up with on it, but this is where we are. We have looked at the issue, I think, of the whole scoring, the, the, the beauty contest, whatever you want to call it. That has its own implications, because, first of all, some of it is sort of codified, and, and parts of it has also been locked in for so long that there's a resistance, I believe, in the community for some of that because, to modify. But yes, we would love to come back and look at some of the modifications. I don't believe that without Measure D amendment, that we could do some of the things you're suggesting, which I'm not suggesting are bad ideas in terms of looking at the way you address these. I think the bigger picture question, answer and, and response is this. We're not necessarily, we're charged with incentivizing ADUs, but we're looking to not disincentivize them. So it's all in how you approach the issue, also recognizing that, that we are on the razor's edge with regard to, and I know no one wants to hear this from HCD in terms of the fact, that they already have in, in, in the legislative laws of the, of the land, provisions that you cannot apply ADUs in your growth management program. Now, we have somewhat of an exception with our LCLUP exception for being in the coastal area, and we, but we're very concerned that those are probably going to be eroded or lost down the road and not probably long from this point. But that's, that's, that's a secondary issue, that's, that's just one of those HCD issues that we're struggling with.
Can you repeat that one more time? You're saying that HCD will not allow ADUs to be counted?
The ADU laws as they exist today say that you are not allowed to basically subject accessory dwelling units to any kind of growth management program. They're exempt by statute, by, by state law. And that's part of the reason why I think the council ultimately landed here was to try to figure out a way to preserve Measure D in its majority point, and to basically try to address the issue of how do we deal with this situation, and also to look at also where HCD is likely to land as we look at trying to certify our housing element with regard to the other affordable housing. We, we're talking about deed-restricted. I mean, we went through a period of a decade in which we did not have a single approved deed-restricted project come through the, the ranks of the city. We're in a, we're in an amazing time right now with two in process or at the same time. That's unusual, because they're very hard to develop, they're very hard to build, and those are the only ones that would be, that this provision would apply to in terms of the exemption. As you've pointed out, many of these projects will use density bonuses, so the number of exemptions that you're actually granting for affordable housing projects is probably going to be far less than what we could even imagine because of the density bonus provisions. So, sorry, I went on, but I, but I think-
No, but that's good context, thank you.
Well, and I'm, so it's clarifying questions, I'm, I'm more confused now. So, so we give incentive for, for ADUs because we want more affordable housing. That's the, that's the directive from city council, that's what, that's what, it's a, it's a big priority, I get that. So, but we give this, and you're saying that we don't give this because HCD says that we're not allowed to give this. So we actually don't give preference to ADUs?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying that. I'm saying within the context of our operation, of how we're applying it and how we're rolling through every year, addressing Measure D and applying that, we do have provisions for incentivizing certain things, including affordable housing and, and ADUs. What I'm saying is, is that, is that the state of California has said that we're not even allowed to apply Measure D to ADUs. That's, that, that's, that's the existing state law.
Could you, I don't, I don't know if that is the existing state law, if you can point me to that direction, I'd be happy to do it.
We'd be happy to do that, but it's in the ADU law, and it's, and, and it's referenced in the letter from HCD. But again, let me be clear for, for, for the community and for you. We recognize and acknowledge that there, right now, in that, in those provisions, there is a give and take among Coastal Commission and HCD with regard to which state agency has the, has the greater authority and what the greater cause. And they're still working that out privately at this point among themselves. And at this point, they have allowed Measure D, and CC, and the Coastal Commission has affirmed that Measure D can remain in process and deal with that, and that's why we continue to apply this. But again, I think there was a reason to try to bypass a threat of having Measure D being challenged or questioned in a larger, in a larger sense with our housing element, and just trying to exempt out these two categories.
If I may, just, if, I just want to build on your points, maybe help.
I guess, I thought I was asking a really simplistic question.
Go ahead. Well, yeah, I, I think you were. So right now, there's a couple of points you brought up, John. And so one, I'd like to direct back to Winter at some point, which is, what is the city's position on whether, from a legal perspective, what is our city's position on whether or not ADUs can be included in our growth measure, our current Measure D? So that, that's one question I'd like to get clarification on. I think, what I think, I'm not actually sure what your original question was, maybe you should restate it for us, because, because I think we've spent a lot of time on this.
Yes, we did. So I guess my question was relatively simple, which is, we give incentive to encourage people with ADUs to do better in our point system, right? That's, like, yes?
One thing I'll add-
The answer is yes.
Yes. One thing I'll add to maybe simplify that to what you're asking is, while we do have those points, I, one thing that, at least I personally noticed in reviewing our Measure D applications for this year, is while we have those incentives in place, they apply for single families that are including ADUs. And as I mentioned briefly during the presentation, all of our applications but one for outside of downtown in 2024 for Measure D did include an ADU, meaning every single one of those applications did qualify for those additional points that come with including an ADU, which is, to some extent, I would say offsetting some of those incentives in a way, because it levels the playing field back to a few other points that might set the rankings apart.
So if I could just follow up on that point. Under the new language that we're putting in place, are we going to retain the extra points for a non-deed-restricted ADU? Is that the intention of the resolution that's going to go on the ballot measure? Because I don't, I see a resolution, but I don't actually see the ballot, a new ballot measure language itself.
That actually wasn't my question.
The ballot, I just, if I could, please. The ballot measure is attached as Exhibit A to the resolution, it is right behind the resolution. That is the ballot measure, it includes also Figure 2.2. So we, we, it is, I, I'm, I'm, so that, that's how the resolution references to Exhibit A, which is attached to that, which is the ballot measure and includes Figure 2.2, just for clarification.
Okay, so my original question, which was not that.
Just, just to clarify, on the agenda, it's the second item on there, and it specifically says Exhibit A on there, so I just wanted everyone to know.
Okay, that wasn't my question.
So it wasn't confusing behind the actual resolution.
So, so my question was, and I understand that you're saying that this year, there were quite a few ADUs, so that's great. So, you know, normally, when, when there's a, a, a big issue like this, which is basically changing a ballot measure that was approved by the voters, like, and what the, what the city usually does, if we get something that's that big, what we usually get is a lot of options, a lot of alternatives, a lot of, like, okay, we could try it this way, or we could try it this way, and here's our analysis about how this would work, and here's our analysis about how this would work. I might have missed it in this packet, but I didn't really see the analysis done on what, sort of what would happen if suddenly, you know, ADUs were exempted and, and there were a million of them. Like, what, you know, that, is that in here somewhere that I don't see? Did you look at the, at sort of what the implications of doing this might be? That's, I guess that's my, that's my question. And did you look at any alternatives, like present any other, any other alternatives? And I, I think that one's actually pretty clear, that that's not the case. But was there analysis?
Chair.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Thank you, through the chair. So the staff report does note that, and some of the public comment has also made this point as well, that the exemptions for ADUs would not change the total number of ADUs that would be allowed in the city, that's set by, you know, the LCLUP, the zoning code. That total number is not going to be changed by this, it's really about the timing and control over the timing. So if you don't need a Measure D certificate, then, then you're still subject to the laws and to the regulations that govern the total numbers, but it would be not subject to the same timing requirements.
So legally, I guess legally, what we're talking about is changing Measure D completely, so that all ADUs are exempted, which means that any other, anything outside of an ADU then takes the Measure Ds. So you're just excluding, you're, you're saying that every, every building, every application had an ADU. So if you exclude all of them, then we're left with zero, except for the, 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 any new buildings that don't include an ADU. So really, what you're doing is you're, is you're encouraging non-ADU building, is what you're doing.
Well, just to clarify, if there's a proposal to do a single-family home in an ADU, you still will need one Measure D certificate for that single-family home. It's only the ADU that is exempt. So I'm not sure if that's, I think that's responsive to what you, you said initially, but I just wanted to make that clarification. Yes, if ADUs are not sort of taking up the space of getting the Measure D allocations, that does open the door for, in terms of the scoring and, and handing out the total amount, it does open the door for other, you know, for single-family home projects and non-ADU projects.
So my question was, if that's, if there is an open door for a lot more building, did the city look at that? And, and so, like, what, what the council's asked for is, you know, what are the, you know, what's the ballot language, but what are the implications of it? Like, I don't see that here. So that's why I'm trying to get, like, maybe I missed it, and so that's what I'm wondering if it's there.
I do, sorry. One more comment. There is a staff report that John referenced from the city council that did lay out a number of different options for the city council to consider. And again, even with the single-family homes, it's not increasing the number of single-family homes that can be built in the city, it's simply, yeah.
Is that, is that a legal issue? Are we, are we like in legal trouble if we- Are we, are we like in legal trouble if we, I'm sorry?
No, I was just explaining the implications of what the measure would be. So sorry if John or Ocoe have more to say on that, it's fine.
I'm just trying to understand. It's different than what is normally presented to us. I don't, there's like a lot of.
We appreciate that, Commissioner Goran, honestly. This is, one of the reasons I asked for this assignment was because this is a unique assignment. Never in my career have I actually worked on an initiative to go to the ballot. And so, you know, as much as I also realize that this was, this was going to be a challenge, because we under, we, I fully understand how Measure D came about, I understand the connection to it, and I understand the reasons behind it, and this community certainly reflects a lot of what Measure D's achievements were. Don't want to make light of that. We were tasked with trying to figure out how to take a very limited impact to Measure D, keep it primarily in its place, and allow for a little bit of flexibility. Now again, if you look at the table and you look at what we've had over the last three years, you can pretty much figure out what the number, and we could do that number if we get a break, of what that might mean in terms of additional units that could have been developed out of that deal. My guess was, in that mix, was about 30 more units that might have gotten allocations over a three-year period because of, because of this exemption. Maybe less, maybe more, in part because not everybody builds a unit that they get an allocation for. So there are those situations. But under Measure D, you don't get those returned back, they're just gone forever. They're, they go into thin air, the ether, whatever you want to call it. So part of what, you know, the concerns and issues are for larger, you know, affordable projects and larger single-building units is that, the reason why the council, I think, went this way, is that you can't, you know, those phasing agreements work great if you're talking about Pacific Ridge, for example, if you were, if it applied here to Pacific Ridge, because you're doing single-family development and you can choose how you build out those lots, it's very difficult to decide to phase out building a single building for, whether affordable or for market rate housing. Measure D has its challenges when it comes to accruing allocations, for example. We didn't want to touch that, we know that's an untouchable issue.
So, so we're kind of edging really close to deliberation, and I was really trying to keep it to clarifying questions and not, you know, opining or whatever. So I guess the, my concern was, the question was, is the language being presented to us or has analysis been done on what the implications of that language are? And so, I think I have my answer, but it doesn't, it doesn't appear that, that sort of possible implications of doing this were really, like, studied. Is that accurate?
We did not go into an extensive analysis, although I will again say, the numbers are pretty, are pretty straightforward when you look at just simply the number and assuming that, that rates remain, even if you remain at a constant rate or even exceeding, I mean, I don't want to get, maybe we can get to the, maybe we can get to another point, but the answer is not a lot of analysis.
Okay. At nine o'clock, we're going to take a five-minute break, but before that time, I would like to ask Commissioner Ruddock if you had any clarifying questions.
Well, I have one.
Sorry to take so much time.
I have one. In the draft of the ballot measure, in Section 5E, we read, "Except as otherwise provided herein, this measure may be amended or repealed only by the voters of the city." And I apologize if my reading has been incomplete, but I didn't see any mention of any exception to that. I just wanted to ask, does, does the ballot measure language allow for any changes in the future without approval by the voters?
No.
Good, thank you.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Even with the ADU rules in place, any ADU on an existing project will have to conform to the number of water connections and sewer connections for that site, correct?
I'm sorry, we were doing, excuse me.
For an ADU, a new ADU, if I choose to build one on my property, I will still be constrained by the water connections and the sewer connections applicable to my project. And my understanding is there's a constraint that is applied to projects. Is that correct? Under the way we plan and permit projects?
At this point, there are exceptions basically for the ADUs in terms of capacity fees and connection fees, particularly if you're, you're looking at an ADU that's 750 square feet or less. So there are exceptions and by, mandated by state law where you cannot apply those normal costs and associated work. Now, you obviously have to build, you have to put in a new meter, you have to do certain things in certain circumstances.
So if it's below 750 square feet, you can grandfather into your existing water connection your existing sewer connection? And if it's above 750 square feet, then?
There's a, it's proportional to the size of the main home, the way the state law reads.
Okay. And what's the, what's the fraction that comes into account?
Lord, I knew you were going to ask me that, and I was trying to figure out what that meant and hope that I'd never have to deal with it, but.
One-third, great.
Thank you, Paul.
Why don't we just go ahead and take a break?
Okay, at this point, we're going to take a five-minute break. And continue on with our clarifying questions on Measure D. And Commissioner Hernandez, did you finish your clarifying questions, or would you like to continue?
Is there a practical limit on the number of ADUs that can be built? Under this ballot measure, I understand that there's a historic number of units that have been built, which is 20 to 30 per year, or some, 10 to 30, whatever the number is, but is there any real limit under state law on the number of ADUs that can be built?
The standard has been one junior ADU and a, and then the possibility of a standalone ADU. And so the typical standard has been basically three units on a lot of record maximum. Steve, is that, that fair?
And each of those projects would have to go through a permitting process, we would have to make sure it conforms to code, and, you know, and there's other constraints that are in place with state law, as one of our local developers has shared with us. So the one-third ratio of.
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, I have no other questions.
So I'm not really sure, John and Ocoe, whether the rest of the commissioners received a copy of the email I sent to you regarding the Measure D questions that I had. Did everybody get that? Okay.
I received it, but I didn't see it, so I have not read it.
Okay.
If you don't mind summarizing, is that okay?
Surely. So, you know, I realize on the, in the report, you know, city staff mentions that, you know, the HCD is requiring the city to amend Measure D. And I'm not really sure if this, if they're really requiring to amend it, or they've only specifically asked to, you know, evaluate certain things. And specifically, I think they said that the growth control and not growth management, as John mentioned, because there's a difference between growth control and growth management, in my opinion, and, you know, if there's a legal definition, fine, I can be corrected, please correct me. And it says, "Growth control, while the element discusses the growth, the city's growth control, including the ability to accommodate the RHNA, it should also evaluate the process for impacts on housing costs, supply, timing, and approval certainty. In addition, the element should discuss compliance with the Housing Crisis Act, which is the government code 66300, and the ADU law, which you mentioned, John, which is 65852.2, and add or modify programs if necessary." So I'm not really sure where we jumped from this statement. So I'm not really sure where we jumped from this statement to modifying the Measure D. It's just a question I have. And so I was wondering if staff conducted any analysis or can provide any details explaining how the amendments to Measure D would comply with all the applicable requirements of the ADU law and the Houses Crisis Act. I also asked for staff to provide an analysis detailing how an exemption for Measure D for ADUs with support affordable housing, because I'm not really sure or I don't understand how the development of ADUs translate equal, it's an even translation to affordable housing. I also wanted to understand the effect on the LUP and all the other elements of the general plan, if the existing single-family property were to, and existing single-family property were to request a permit to construct an ADU or a junior ADU, which I think deserves an explanation of what those two terminologies really mean for the public. Let's just say immediately after this ballot gets approved, has the city developed an understanding, has city staff developed an understanding as to how many people would actually come through and ask for an ADU? Are we going, do we think that the majority of the single, existing single-family homes, single-family dwellings in the city would rush to come and get permits for an ADU? And will the city be able to handle that? And will the infrastructure in the city be able to handle that? And how will the city determine whether those are affordable or not? So those were some of my questions, so maybe we can start there.
We obviously had, I think we received that at 4:25 today, so we did not have a chance. We went into a closed session at 5:00. So is there, is there one in particular that you would, or a few of those or whatever? I don't want to take the time. I know we've got another applicant going, and I'm concerned about their time as well.
Well, if you would like to continue this item to another date, that would be, I'd be happy to wait for your response.
Through the chair.
Please, go ahead.
I think there's, maybe we could simplify, because your questions, I think, make a lot of sense and are things we should, we should, we should answer. The first question here is, there's, there's two parts. So one is, how does this comply? But I think the question I would ask is, does it really matter? If city council has directed staff to put a ballot measure together, the question is, does this language, under staff's analysis, which I think is in the staff report, does this language that we're putting forth for the ballot measure meet the requirements for the ADU law and the housing crisis? Is it in conformance with those laws? I think that's really the question, because we've already been directed to do this. So does it conform with, and does it take into account those laws? Have you done that type of analysis?
So I'll try to be as succinct as possible with that one. There is the letter that is referenced by Commissioner Johannes and our vice chair, sorry. And clearly, they identify several things that they want us to look at and analyze in the analysis. However, their, the conversations, and this dates back even to Cycle 5, in which there were significant concerns from HCD regarding whether Measure D should be applicable. This tries to rectify a basic question, which is, how do we deal with Measure Ds and ADUs? And ultimately, how do we allow the voters to make a decision? And if they choose not to, then they've made that decision, and that gives us buffer from any question about the question of why aren't you trying to fix this issue with Measure D or whatever with this?
I don't think that's my question. My question is specifically, how, what, what did the city do to analyze what is necessary to appease HCD?
Certainly, we've had conversations, and they were extremely thrilled to hear that we were contemplating a ballot measure to allow the voters to decide on this matter.
And their, their feedback was this would conform with their interpretation of the law?
Yes.
So would they have given this ballot the Exhibit A to look at?
They were not given the ballot measure. We indicated recently that the city council had asked for this to be considered and that they would be looking at doing this in July as the council. They were happy to hear that we were contemplating doing so.
And, oh, I'm sorry. And with regard to the consistency with the LUP and the other elements of the general plan, does this conform completely with all the other elements of the general plan?
We believe that it does, yes.
Is there an analysis that you did to develop that belief?
We reviewed, went through it like anyone else would do, and determined that we believe that it was consistent.
Through the chair. The second point in Hazel's letter asks, is there a logical, I'm going to rephrase it, is there a logical connection between the Measure Ds, sorry, the, changing the ADU language? If we build more ADUs, we make it easier to build more ADUs, is there a logical connection between more affordable housing produced, or is it more, we're just going to produce more housing? It's not, so is there, is there a distinct, it's absolutely going to happen, yeah.
So part of the question gets to the point is, will this be, I heard a question, which is, will there, will there be a rush to, to build ADUs galore because of this action? That was, was part of what was asked by, I believe, by Commissioner Johannes.
Sorry. First, I would like the answer to the rephrasing of what Commissioner Hernandez said.
Is there a necessary law? There's no necess, my, yeah, there's not necessarily going to produce more affordable housing. In practice, you've seen some more affordable housing has been produced because people have leased, leased their property out to somebody, maybe a housekeeper or maybe an assistant. Is there a logical tie-in, or is it just there's an assumption that this will produce more housing, and some of that housing, because it's a smaller unit, would therefore be affordable housing?
The state has reconciled and legislated that these are affordable by design and affordable by the fact that they claim that they are affordable. And, and that is what we're stuck with. That is what you're legislated to do. So, and there is a reality to some of that.
And does it burn down our affordable housing requirements in the RENA?
It does.
Excellent. So, so if you build an ADU...
Portions of it, portions of that.
So there's some fraction of, if I build 10 affordable units of housing, it burns down some allocation of our RENA by definition?
Yes, and even including low and very low components of our RENA.
So it helps us eliminate the 284 units of affordable housing we have to build over the next eight years?
Yes.
Great.
So I don't understand, how do we know that that is affordable housing? Because if somebody comes in and says, "I want to build an ADU," how do you know that is going to end up as affordable housing? Like, I can rent my ADU for $2,000 a month, $4,000 a month, $5,000 a month. How do we know it's affordable?
Again, there, the state has agreed in principle that there, and there's a formula, and there's a whole analysis of this in the Cycle 6 housing element in terms of how those are allocated out. It is a small percentage...
I'm not talking about allocations. I just want to make sure that when we talk about affordable housing, it really means affordable housing out of the pockets of people. I'm not talking about numbers that we're trying to manage so we can get an approval for HCD without really looking at the affordability for real people that need the houses.
We have been precluded by state law from actually requiring them to be restricted, indeed restricted. We are, we allow them under Measure D, but it used to be that you could put provisions under, and we were precluded from doing that as a, as a, as a general law by the state. So there is no absolute to this. People will rent for what they choose to rent it. It's the marketplace.
And one last thing is, just let's say everybody decides they want to build an ADU with the existing dwelling units that exist, the single-family dwelling units that exist today and that can put in ADUs in the spaces that they exist and that have. I mean, is the city prepared at this point to manage hundreds of permits at one, at once? I mean, how is the city going to manage this?
Given the limited review authority that we have over these, I'm not all that concerned in that context, and I'm also not concerned about the mad gold rush to, to ADUs. They're, you know, what I understand, and Paul can tell me better, but I know they're running well in excess of $400,000, $500,000 for each one of these units to be built as an attached unit. There's just, I don't imagine and don't foresee a mad gold rush to these, because it's just an affordability issue for those wishing to build them.
And does the city have any idea of if, if this ballot measure goes, goes in, how many they anticipate then, if it's not the gold rush, a mad gold rush? Is it a bronze rush? Is it a something else?
If I could go back to the question that I should have been able to answer more readily with, with Commissioner Gorn, if you look at the last five years, you look at a three-year scenario, it would have been about 30-odd units that maybe would be in addition allowed because of this exemption to the ADUs over a five-year period, that had been closer to 60 over that period of time. You know, pushing that out over that time, and you can look at, you know, potentially a similar number. We've had the gold rush, I think, during the 2020, 2021 time. We're seeing somewhat of a flattening out of, of that number, still a high number, but, but I think the gold rush was 2021 with interest rates low and COVID.
If I may, your expectation, city's expectation based on practical experience is no more than 15, no more than 10, maybe 20 to 30 per year, more likely, no more than 100 over a five-year planning period.
Fair enough, maximum.
That's your expectation?
That would be our expectation. We're, the, the housing element anticipates 114 over, 114 ADUs, I believe, is the number over the eight-year period.
And the constraints are, it's just the practical cost of doing this is half a million dollars roughly, and the other constraints for permitting and the time it takes for individuals to go through it. Hazel had another question, 3B, which was, I think the question is more of, if we're allowing more people to live in our community, how do Measure Ds, how are Measure Ds impacting taxes? I know, like, the number of bedrooms I have in my house is taxed from a school district perspective. Do the bedrooms and the ADUs get taxed as new bedrooms?
ADUs are subject to additional property tax, obviously, from assessors, so these do get captured in the, in the new, in each assessment role, so those do get included.
And each bedroom would be taxed the way the school...
However, the assessors decide to appraise and evaluate.
I wanted to know, do we have any data to show or that might demonstrate that exempting ADUs in Measure D would not compromise our infrastructure?
The, specific to this, for the ballot measure, no. What I, what we can say is that the carrying, we went through a, an extensive analysis of carrying capacity within the LCLUP. Those were both looked at from, and they were looked at from a constrained perspective. And again, we do not see that being a significant issue to this, because again, we're not looking at more units than what we anticipated. Maybe the timing slightly different, but that would just mean you would get to the end point, I guess, sooner in terms of the build-out, which is not a reality, given what our build-out is, but, but in theory. The answer is, we believe the infrastructure is perfectly capable of handling the slightly increased uptick in the number of these units that might occur.
Through the chair. But, but you haven't studied it or done any analysis, because we haven't had time to do it.
Other than, other than already the work that's been done through the LCLUP and the carrying capacity analysis and the infrastructure analysis and the utilities analysis and everything that was done with the LCLUP and our master plans for sewer and other infrastructure, no, we have not gone through an extensive analysis of this ballot measure.
But Appendix B of the LCLUP has a build-out, and this, the numbers that we're talking about would fall well short of the maximum build-out under the LCLUP for the 50-year plan.
Yes.
But I can also tell you, if the city made ADUs exempt, I'd put one in tomorrow. Like, I, everyone would, everyone would, legally or not. Also through the chair, are you done with clarifying questions? Because I am concerned about the, the third group here.
Okay, I am done with clarifying questions for myself. Anyone else? Okay. Did you want to have a discussion?
So personally, I don't see any data or analysis to make any decision. I just don't see it. I don't see anything about what could happen. I don't see anything about why it's important. I don't see any alternatives. I don't see, I don't see anything. And so I would direct staff to answer those questions. I think that, you know, I understand there's a time constraint. I understand city council has asked for this, but I just, there's no way to even consider it based on what is in front of us.
I would strongly disagree with that statement.
Okay, can, can we, yes, but we're going to go through the order of, and I don't know if you're done?
Sure.
Okay, but then I was going to ask Commissioner Rodeck to chime in.
Thank you. I think it's clear that residents of Half Moon Bay and the coast in the state of California have made it clear how important ADUs can be in the housing mix. I think the city council has exercised good judgment in thinking about letting the voters express their opinion of this change in November. I think that the recent data, the Measure D data that this, that our group has reviewed every year for recent years, gives me a lot of confidence in believing that there would be a small but slightly helpful improvement in the number of ADUs and, and the number of a few other single-family residents that would get Measure D certificates that are probably not. A small but helpful number. As, as John and Commissioner Hernandez pointed out just a minute ago, a small uptick well within the, the build-out projections of the LUP. And we all heard a little while ago, Krista Lynn from the Chamber of Commerce expressing how important it is to our businesses and employers to look for ways to make housing more accessible for people who have to work here. I don't see any threats to health and safety policies or any other policies in the LUP from this, this possible increase in, in units if the voters approve it. So I'm all in favor of it.
Thank you. Commissioner Hernandez?
Yeah, I mean, from a discussion perspective, I, I, I think that we've clearly heard that a small percentage of the population has been inconvenienced over many years in their inability to get projects approved. We've also seen a gaming of the system where people are building ADUs, putting ADUs on projects where they might not otherwise do it, just so they can get their project approved and prioritized. I've heard discussions from multiple applicants who've shared that perspective with me. And to me, you know, there is a housing crisis in California. I think many agencies outside of Half Moon Bay have criticized, including ADUs and measure D allocations or similar constraints in other communities. I have that same criticism. I think it's silly to include the ADUs. If I build an extension on my house and I don't call it a JDU, you know, I can do that, right? It's, it's easy to just extend the size of my house. I mean, I think part of the point is we're trying to make it easier, less restrictive for people to create a place for their kids or their grandparents or other members of the community who work here like Crystal Lynn to, you know, have a place to live in our community. I, I think this addresses those concerns. It's not, it's not going to create a flood of housing because it's still incredibly expensive to build. You know, you can go put a, one of these she sheds, as they call it, in the back of your yard and that's going to cost you 20, 30, 40 grand, you know, when you're all in, right? I mean, and people aren't rushing to do that and, you know, those are small. Yeah, I, to me, this is a scalpel that protects measure D, protects us from litigation. And at the end of the day, it's not our decision. We're, we're just saying, yeah, okay, this conforms and there's no major issue, in my view. We'll put it on the ballot and let people decide. I do think cleaning up the map that's used would be incredibly helpful. And, you know, i- if we could have some language that explains to voters before this gets to city council so they can see it, that there's this one-third ratio in terms of capacity, there are constraints under state law because those kinds of constraints weren't made apparent to me. And, you know, and I think providing some of the analysis of why we're doing this could also be helpful, even if it's not necessarily in the ballot measure, but certainly in the staff report that goes to city council, I think it would be really helpful to provide a little more detailed analysis around the RENA requirements and the interpretation that has, that we're applying here. I think it would be incredibly helpful.
Vice Chair, Joanna.
I don't disagree with anything you say, but I feel that it's our job to review anything that goes before the city council with us first. I think it's, it's our job because they gave us this in the first place to look at it, to analyze it, to figure this out. And if we're saying that there should be a second staff report to, to explain to city council what wasn't explained to us here is derelict of, at least my feeling, my duty. So I would prefer if this would come back with the information that would potentially go to city council with the new language, language or the explanations that, that, you know, Commissioner Hernandez is asking for, I'd be, you know, I would love to see that and, and to be able to comfortably say, yes, city council, we have a solid measure D ballot that can go before the city population, voting population to specifically delineate exactly what is being asked of the voters. I think it's important that we understand that here at this dais before we send things through. Otherwise, we're sending things haphazardly. Right now, we've had so many different questions and that, and staff has done a fantastic job trying to cobble something up in such a short timeline because we're trying to meet a rushed timeline, which I don't even know what that timeline is. I just know that it's supposed to be a vote in November 4th or November 5th, but I don't know what the timeline is to get something on the ballot. Nobody's explained that to me. So I'm not in favor of sending this to city council as it stands right now.
I hear what everyone is saying and I appreciate what you're saying. And we clearly have infrastructure challenges on the coast and this is why measure D came about mainly to protect our infrastructure. In terms of our RENA number requirement, I understood our requirement to be 480 plus a bonus of 20%. If we look at the measure D that we've been approving in the past five years, we clearly get above 480 and super density bonus allows us to gain even more units. So I don't see the problem of meeting our RENA requirement for, with our current measure D as it stands. The other thing that for me is interesting is this year we have 17 possible September transfers from the base downtown that could be transferred to those units that didn't get a measure D allocation in the outside area. And city council has discretion to make those transfers. So in terms of what people applied for in this year, 63, except for the one who's asking for a variance, every unit could possibly be approved in the September transfer. So I'm not seeing the rush to put together a ballot measure when the measure D allows us to meet our RENA allocation and we have super density bonus law that can be used for our low-income housing projects. And I'm also not convinced that the ADUs accomplish the goal of providing affordable housing. I understand the multi-generational housing and I do appreciate that, but I don't see measure D being a constraint. And we should be strong and feel good about why we have our measure D. It's to protect our infrastructure. It's not to limit growth. It's to control our growth in an orderly fashion. So I'm with, I, I'm not ready to vote on a resolution tonight to, to send this ballot to city council. Thank you.
So, through the chair? So I, I also, I feel that the measure D is the LCP. Like it's, they're, they're so linked that it's, it's, you know, to say that, that it meets LCP requirements, it doesn't because it's changing it. It's changing measure D. It's also, you know, you've taken what was a vote of the people and now you're, you're saying, well, the city council is, you know, the city council did not put measure D on the ballot in the first place. People did. People tried to put this measure on the ballot and they failed. So I don't understand why, so that's politics. That's not, that's not what, what we're discussing. But what, but what I feel is that if the, if the issue is trying to increase the number of ADUs, trying to satisfy HCD, then, you know, I think the council needs some choices, some alternatives, some, 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 you know, you could go this way or you could go that way, you could try this, you could try that. And as a planning commission, as planners, we just need some data, like why, you know, not just why it's important, but what happens if we do this and how has that been analyzed? And how has that been? And that's just not here. So I would make a motion to, to, can we move this to, until the, the staff answers some of those questions and does some of that analysis? Can we do that?
Are you making a motion?
I would like to make a motion to table this.
Table?
Not table.
Not table?
You'd like to make a motion?
So you'd like to continue to a date uncertain?
Continue to a date uncertain?
To the next meeting? I mean, you're not going to come up with data in one, in two weeks.
Well.
Like I just still don't see it. I don't see that how things are going to change in two weeks.
Can, can, I don't want to, I'd say make the motion in a second.
I would like to, I would like to continue to a date uncertain.
Could we, could we have a conversation about that after the motion in the second?
I would like to make a motion to continue to a date uncertain. How about that? That's my motion.
I second the motion. Okay, we could, yes, definitely have a discussion now that it's on the table.
Can I make a couple of comments? So I'm ambivalent about whether or not the ballot measure needs to come before us. What I am very concerned about is, is a lack of analysis in the staff report. So I agree with the points that you've made. I don't know if I necessarily need to have it come back to me, but if, if the rest of the commission wants to do that, that's fine. The specific things I would like to see is what is a forecast based on the available data, historic perspective, like that city staff believes is going to be the impact? I'd like to see that in writing. And, you know, I look at appendix B in the LCLUP, the build-out, the numbers I've heard, even if they're 5X larger, we're still going to be within the build-out, right? Like we, we have a lot of capacity within our 50-year plan to support this type of housing theoretically. Things need to happen, sandplats need to happen, traffic, but the, the LCLUP imagines a larger build-out. But it would be helpful to have staff reference that specifically and talk about, here's what the projections are. It would also be helpful to not just have something shouted from the public about what the constraints are, because I think it's helpful to understand as we're building JDUs and ADUs, there are certain constraints that are put in place under state law and summarizing them would be incredibly helpful for us. So it's not just, hey, we're going to build another 1,100 unit or another, whatever it is, 5,000 ADUs over the next few years. I think that would be incredibly helpful. So I'm ambivalent about whether it needs to come back to us and if you guys want to do that, then that's fine.
And I would also like to add, you know, tying the nexus between appendix B of the housing element with this measure to make sure everything ties together and also make sure how, to discuss how the safety element ties into the circulation, ties into the entire ADU, you know, this entire ballot measure, sorry.
I, I also wanted to just hit one other thing. Like the most important thing we're trying to do here is we're trying to keep measure D intact. And so there's an argument that measure D may be completely taken apart if we don't put something in place. And so I'd like to have that analysis, because we've mentioned this, that we're trying to protect measure D, whatever the analysis that, we don't need to discuss it tonight, but whatever the analysis that goes into that, would like to just have that come back to us or city council or whoever gets it next, because that is part of, part of what I've heard is the reason why we're here.
Sorry. So, Chair, could I?
Sure.
I, I don't want to, I won't take long. You asked, what's the, what's the timeline? Basically, July 16th is the date that the council, because of their meeting schedule and everything, is the date that they have to set by resolution if they choose to put this on the ballot. This leaves us very limited time, meaning the next meeting, to come back to this point. And I'm, from what I hear, there is no way that we will have any, anywhere near, close to the analysis that you're asking for. So, and with that in mind, I would suggest the alternative language, which is to forward a recommendation that the council not place this on the ballot.
I'd rather not.
And that would be a much more appropriate answer to this question.
I'm sorry, I'd rather not do that. I'd rather us do our job and, and not send it down the line, kick the can down the line. This is something that the city council has requested for, requested and as the staff report actually does say is that it is the city commission's job to do this. When is the deadline to get a ballot in? I know the July 16th is a date that needs to go to the city council. When is the ballot measures supposed to be?
The date is in August, but this is when the council can get to it and this is when they're scheduled. They have their first meeting in August is canceled off the schedule. We are on a schedule to deal with this. And again, I don't, I don't believe that there is a, the possibility of developing a basis for, for, for support of this initiative sitting on the dais, frankly. Because I don't think that, that can be derived.
Can I, so.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Normally, you know, we'd go to midnight and we'd do this whole thing, we'd talk, talk it through, but I'm a little concerned again about our third item and we have people here who have been waiting really patiently. Are we okay just asking, can I just ask for a vote, please?
I mean, we, we have a, we have a month. I just want to just finish the discussion here. We have a, we have a full month, right? We can have a planning commission meeting on the 9th of July. And so like, I think these questions need.
I'm not here.
Well, not all of us may be here, but that's, it's an option, right?
The 9th, the 9th of July is, has been taken up as an alternate second hearing for 555 Kelly at this point. So we, we'll have to work around that, but that, that, that has been repositioned.
Maybe, maybe there's a subset of the analysis that you all are asking for that is feasible for staff to do. I don't think with the small numbers we're talking about that a rehash of the safety element makes sense, for instance, but maybe a, a forecast of the increase in ADUs and other single-family dwellings based on real data, would, would that, would that go some ways to giving you the, the data-driven look at the implications if this passes?
I, I just want to ask a clarifying question, Commissioner Radek. What do you mean a rehash of the safety element? The safety element is under, under consideration right now. It's being updated.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that, that the small numbers that we, that, that, that one would, you know, suspect we're talking about here would, would call for redoing a total study of the infrastructure on the coast and what impact this is going to have.
That, that, the point is that we don't know what the impact, the complete impact is going to be. I think a lot of what we're saying is we're guessing at that impact. And so we, if we, if we really understand the numbers, I mean, you know, staff presented a, a survey, which they attempted to do and, you know, the data, you know, is there, but it, it can be a little bit more in-depth. And it's not only on the ADUs, it's also on, okay, what does this mean with having the ADUs not take up these allocations? There's going to be allocations for everybody else. And so we, we, we would like to understand that. And that has implications on the circulation, circulation of the city's traffic. It has implications on the sewer. It has implications on drinking water. It has implications on fire safety. It has implications on a lot. So a little bit of information is helpful.
I, I, I think, I think it's not a rehash. It's simply, we need to see in writing that city staff has done the analysis and come back and said, there's no material impact and here's why.
And we would like to see the analysis.
So I think there's a motion to, if you guys want to just vote on the motion.
Okay. So Bridget, could you call for it, please?
Could I ask, what is the motion?
The motion is to continue this to a date uncertain.
Uncertain?
Yeah, uncertain, because I don't know when, I don't know when it's going to be in front of us. Like they don't know. They don't know.
We will incur an additional cost, hundreds and hundreds of dollars for another notice. If it, I would suggest at least to continue it. It does not mean that it will be on the agenda for the next meeting, but at least gives us a chance to evaluate that.
That's a date uncertain, right?
Date uncertain means that we have to then renotice when we're ready to go and that will be an expenditure of additional cost.
We, we understand.
I think that's important to know.
Can I make a suggestion to amend the motion so that we continue the item and not say certain or uncertain? Is that what the city?
No, you have to say certain in order to avoid.
Can we just say uncertain?
You can say uncertain, but then we have to renotice and it costs hundreds or thousands of dollars to re.
How many thousands of dollars are we talking about? Hundreds of thousands?
Eight hundred to a thousand dollars.
Eight hundred to a thousand dollars for us to do something right versus doing something wrong.
Just clarifying.
Can we pick a date? Like the city, can we, can we pick a date? Like, the city sta, can we, can we pick a date and a, a certain date? Can, yeah?
So I have a problem with that, because, you know, what we're talking about is opinions and guesses. We're not talking about numbers. And so I don't know, you know, how long it would take to get numbers. My guess is it's not two weeks, but I, and so I can't say, I can't say, oh, we're going to continue this to a certain day.
I think, I think what I was, it's not for us. I was asking, it was really a question of city staff, could they pick a date? Two weeks out or four weeks out? If, if the concern is we're going to save a thousand dollars for the city, fine, could you pick a date?
It, it sounds like we're going to a date uncertain.
Okay.
Yes.
Matthew, just our city manager. Could we continue it to the next meeting? And we'll see where we're at, and you could always continue it again, correct? I think that's how we resolve both these issues. We keep it front and center. We'll see where we're at in two weeks. If it's not sufficient, um, or we don't think there's enough, then we'll simply put that in a staff report, and you continue it again.
Great.
Okay. That's, that's a good way to do that. Thank you, Matthew.
I will amend the motion to be, uh, continued to a date certain or next meeting.
That would be June 25th? Just clarifying.
I second.
Um, so you went, you wanted to roll call. Commissioner, uh, Riddick?
No.
Commissioner Gorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
No.
Commissioner Johannes?
Yes.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Chair Gossett?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, that was, uh, three zero, so the motion is to continue. So it's passed three to two, sorry. Three, two, move to June 25th.
Okay, so, well, oh, a, a five-minute break has been requested.
Do we need to continue, uh, extend the meeting?
Oh, yes, and we probably should extend this till-
I moved to extend the meeting to, what, 10:30?
No.
Would that be enough time? That wouldn't be enough time.
The meeting, we have till 10:30, and then we can do an extension.
Okay.
I'd say 11:30, so we don't have to continually-
Yeah, right.
You're the chair.
We can extend it after the break if you want to extend the meeting.
At this point, I would like to introduce item, uh, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I think it's 3A or 1C. Oh, it's 1C. And this is the coastal development permit, architectural review and use permit for the Barn Restaurant, CD, City File PDP 23 dash 086. And before we get started, I would like to ask my fellow commissioners if there is any ex-party, uh, communication they would like to disclose.
I had some minor communications about the timing of the meeting with the applicant. I haven't actually spoken about the project with, with the applicant's representative, but I haven't actually spoken to the applicant or the applicant's representative about the item itself.
Okay. I had the same discussion with the applicant, uh, similar discussion. Thank you. That's it. Oh, Scott?
Thank you, Chair Gossett and members of the Planning Commission. Nice to see you all this evening. I'm Scott Phillips, senior planner at the city, uh, presenting the, the project. And, uh, this is an item that was initially, uh, scheduled and noticed for, uh, May 28th, but was continued to tonight to a date certain. All right, so this slide shows, uh, an aerial photograph of the subject property, uh, which is on the north side of town, just south of the city boundary, which is shown with the yellow line there. And the project, uh, site includes three distinct properties, which I'm going to refer to as the main lot, shown in red, and then the north lot, uh, just north of the main lot, and the south lot. Now, a little background, I'm going to go into this, the site history, uh, as well as the permits requested that was already mentioned, and a little bit about the project Now, the site was, uh, let's see, the Planning Commission approved a coastal development permit and architectural review and use permit back in 2007, uh, for the development of the site. And this slide, I, I was able to find in the old archives, a photograph of when the story poles were initially, uh, you know, constructed back in, uh, before the planning commission approval. Now, uh, the site, you know, was, a commercial building was constructed, uh, as well as a pervious paver parking lot with a, uh, very large rainwater storage recycling system, uh, extensive landscaping. Uh, he was a landscape architect, uh, that's, uh, multi-generational here in Half Moon Bay that developed the site. And then, um, right around 2009, they actually acquired a long-term lease for the south lot, shown in green here, and came back to the planning commission to modify the approvals to allow for outdoor retail, uh, on the south lot for, uh, plants and other gardening supplies, as well as, um, increasing the, uh, the interior restaurant or space of the, the building to allow for, uh, more restaurant space. Now, um, at that time, the north lot was not available to them. They, they tried, but, uh, the owners at the time were just not, uh, interested in, uh, leasing the north lot. So, uh, the planning commission also processed a parking exception to allow for the expanded restaurant use, which, uh, requires more off-street parking than retail does. So that took place in 2009. Now, closer to the present, uh, 2014, uh, the business was sold, and the new owners, they decided they didn't want to do any more retail, but they, uh, sort of modified the, um, you know, the menu to, uh, you know, more of a lunch places and dinner place as opposed to breakfast. And initially, the, uh, when they took over the business, they maintained the same, uh, restaurant eating space. They did not allow restaurant use on the south lot, which was, was consistent with the use permit that was approved by the planning commission back in, uh, 2007 and modified in 2008. Now, um, later on, COVID-19 pandemic, uh, all the, uh, sort of takeout food, uh, the business really prospered. And similar to other places throughout the country, uh, cities allowed outdoor dining in places that normally it wouldn't be allowed, you know, for example, in streets and, uh, here on the south lot, this, the city did the same thing. We allowed temporary outdoor dining because indoor dining was prohibited during shelter in place. Towards the end of the pandemic, uh, the owners at the time, they acquired a lease for the north lot. So they were, they were able to, uh, utilize the north lot for some informal parking. Now, closer to the present, uh, you know, um, it's always a good time to sell once business is up, so, uh, in 2023, the business changed hands again. And, uh, you know, the, the previous owners, they, they continued to use the south lot as, uh, outdoor dining, and the city, um, let them know that that was, um, out of compliance with the use permit and encouraged them to submit. And, um, you know, the, a couple, some structures were also built, some, some storage sheds and, and other structures without the benefit of permits. And the current owners, uh, were notified of, of the, um, non-permitted work that took place in the south lot. Shortly after that, they did submit for permits, and, uh, that's part of the reason why this is being reviewed tonight. So as mentioned, uh, permits requested included a coastal development permit and use permit. Several, uh, new buildings are also, uh, proposed, which is why the architectural review approval is also required. And I'll briefly touch upon the, the project scope. Uh, as far as the main lot goes, a new outdoor dining structure, sort of a, uh, covered breezeway area would be extended from, uh, westward from the main building and end at a new, uh, restroom. Um, longitudinally, a, uh, pedestrian path would be installed that would link the three lots. So that would predominantly be on the, the sort of the main lot. Uh, as far as the north lot, uh, the owners would like to formalize the, the informal parking that's been taking place, uh, which includes a, you know, gravel parking lot and fencing, shown in brown on the north lot there. Uh, and then, um, additional signage, um, directing traffic, uh, in and out of the lot. Uh, you'll notice that, uh, the brown fencing along the, the eastern boundary would prohibit, um, entering and exiting Cabrillo Highway from the north lot, uh, which people regularly do right now. Regarding the south lot, um, you know, the picnic tables, the sort of the outdoor dining use, uh, would, would be included in the new use permit, uh, as well as a new, uh, trash enclosure and, um, activity area, you know, uh, the idea is that families, and this would accommodate for, uh, kids to play while, you know, parents can sit and eat and, um, more, be more of a gathering place for families. Now, as far as, uh, you know, the, the background, um, when the application was initially submitted, the city routed plans, uh, for comments. The inter-agency comment review period included routing to Granada Community Services District, since this is, this site is north of Frenchman's Creek. It's in, within the, the sewer dis, sewer authority of Granada Community Services District. Of course, Public Works and Engineering, uh, Caltrans, uh, was routed plans, uh, on two separate occasions. Uh, our Building and Division also reviewed the plans, as well as the Coastside Fire Protection District, uh, the Coastside County Water District, and then comments, uh, were received from all these agencies and either integrated into the revised design or included as conditions of approval. Now, the project was also reviewed by our Architectural Advisory Committee on December 14th, just before Christmas. Now, this slide shows a, sort of the enlarged site plan, uh, show, you know, prepared by the, uh, architect that was hired, uh, to help with the permitting process, and it shows the ADA path of travel, as well as the, uh, the new pedestrian pathway, uh, which is, you know, been referred to as Main Street, uh, connecting the three lots. And you'll see that it, uh, this also has a portion of the, the new parking north lot. The new restroom, uh, is more of a shipping container design that, um, is become quite common in sort of the, uh, outdoor dining establishments, uh, that, uh, you've probably seen in other communities. The image on the lower left-hand corner is the floor plan of the existing building, which would be completely converted to, uh, restaurant prep space, so no more indoor This slide shows the, uh, proposed elevations that include, uh, not only the existing building, but the, uh, outdoor dining, uh, breezeway covered, uh, extension, uh, as well as the, the new restroom. Now, the architect also prepared several, uh, you know, photographic renderings, uh, which were, which is very helpful for getting a sense of the proposed project. And, uh, this one is sort of an oblique view from, uh, sort of the southwest, looking, uh, looking northeast. And, um, I tried to illustrate the 10-foot required setback in the rear in which the new, uh, trash enclosure would, would meet, um, as well as, you know, the other shed Here we have another rendering that illustrates the, you know, sort of the new covered outdoor dining structure that would be constructed out from the main building, as well as the new walkway. And here's a, an oblique view that gives you a good indication of the new parking area, the existing main lot, and then the south lot further down. And another rendering from the north elevation, showing the new shipping container restroom, outdoor dining area, and the existing building. Now, sort of the, the primary components of the analysis that was provided in the staff report include the review by the Architectural Advisory Committee, compliance with our local coastal program, including the land use plan and zoning, as well as CEQA. Now, as far as the Architectural Advisory Committee review that took place in December, you know, several comments were provided to the applicant and some suggestions. In general, the AAC was very supportive of the project. They just really tried to make it better. And a couple of the things that they asked for, the initial design of the new outdoor dining structure did not connect to the main building. They strongly encouraged connecting to the main building, which the architect did make the change. And then also enclosing the western gable. So the, sort of, the image on the lower right-hand corner shows the gable of the new outdoor dining structure. And initially, it was open. It has been enclosed with exterior material that matches the existing building. Now, one other point that the AAC's strong suggestion was to hold off on landscaping on the north lot if there wasn't any irrigation. And, you know, the applicant has agreed to that as well. Now, a little bit on the land use plan. One key policy that was noted in the staff report was Policy 2-80, that has to do with the visitor-serving commercial, which is the land use designation in which all three properties are within. And it encourages, you know, the establishment of restaurants, bars, galleries, coastal and ocean recreational facilities, to support coastal access and visitors. So, that said, the policy doesn't necessarily identify eating and drinking establishments as principally permitted, i.e. not requiring a use permit. So, therefore, we really need to rely on our zoning ordinance in order to make the determination whether or not restaurants are allowed by rights, or if they need a use permit. Now, in this case, chapter, the commercial visitor-serving chapter of our zoning code does call out restaurants as a conditional use, therefore requiring the approval of a use permit in order to expand or establish a restaurant within the commercial visitor-serving zoning district. So, that is the primary reason this project is in front of the planning commission tonight, is that in order to expand the restaurant, particularly on the south lot, a use permit is required. Now, as far as off-street parking, the zoning code does require one off-street parking space per 45 square feet of indoor dining space. Now, the new outdoor dining structure that's proposed, sort of the, the space that that would cover, was utilized as a comparative analysis for the off-street parking spaces required. Well, or, but, the reality is, is that our code only requires off-street parking for enclosed restaurant space, which they're proposing none. So this was really used more from a, an intensification perspective to get a sense of, okay, is this, is this the right amount of parking for, you know, the, sort of, the use that's proposed? Now, as far as bicycle parking, there is short-term bicycle parking that meets the code. The owners have also designated space for long-term parking that employees could park their bicycles at. Now, just a little bit about the north parking lot. You probably noticed there, we did add some conditions of approval, requiring some, a few more details as far as signage, directing vehicle traffic flow into the Blue Sky Way, as well as additional fencing along Blue Sky Way, as well as a perimeter around the new parking lot to contain the gravel. And that is something that, you know, we'll certainly work with, you know, both the applicant and the city engineer, to make sure that the perimeter curb meets the requirements and prohibits any gravel to, you know, going out into the public right-of-way. Now, one last item that we did ask for within conditions of approval is to more clearly show the parking spaces through, you know, maybe it's utilization of ropes or some sort of synthetic material to, within the gravel itself to designate the parking spaces. And then, just a little bit about the existing main lot. You know, the image on the lower left-hand corner shows Cabrillo Highway in the, in the background. This is facing east. You'll notice that there is a sign that was installed to the right there prohibiting left-hand turns. Staff has noticed that a lot of times, customers either don't notice the sign, or maybe they intentionally ignore it and make the left-hand turn. Working with our city engineer, we did add an additional condition of approval, asking for either an enlarged sign or additional signage to make it more obvious that left turns are just not allowed out of the parking lot. So, so that was Condition B, two lowercase b. Now, the commission recently reviewed a project by Caltrans for resurfacing and restriping of a good portion of Cabrillo Highway within city limits. This, the portion of Cabrillo Highway in front of the Barn Restaurant was included in the project, so you'll, you'll want to anticipate, you know, sort of repaving and restriping to take place out in front of, you know, this commercial property in the near future. And lastly, as far as CEQA, staff has determined that the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of CEQA. And we, you know, a memorandum was distributed this afternoon that provided a little more information on the exceptions to the exemptions. So, we went through and they, you know, we just made sure that there, none of the exceptions to the, applied to this particular site. And, you know, I encourage you to take a look at the memo that was distributed this afternoon. Now, on that same note, noticing quite a bit took place. We did a courtesy notice before the AAC meeting in December, posted the site. And noticing to the neighbors within 300 feet took place for the meeting on May 28th. We continue to adhere to certain tonight, so we were required to renotice. We did repost the site as a courtesy, just to let folks know that, hey, we're going to have this meeting tonight. Now, and then the commission, we did receive, let's see, back in May, we received one email notification from a neighbor that was included in the first memo to the planning commission. Staff met with the neighbor, you know, to get a sense of the concerns. The property, or the business owner also met with her and just, and I believe that the concerns have been addressed. Now, more recently, we received a few clarifying questions and comments from commissioners, and then one comment letter. Those were distributed to the commission tonight through the second memo. And our recommendation is, you know, to adopt the resolution included in the staff report. And I did include, you know, the other options as Chair Gossett has suggested that we include in presentations, you know, that if there's any modifications to conditions of approval or additional conditions that the commission would like to add, you're welcome to do that. Of course, continuing the item is also an option as well. And then, you know, just a refresher on, suggestion on meeting format. That concludes my presentation.
Point of order, just, did we continue the meeting?
Thank you, Scott. At this point, we might want to continue the meeting. Does someone want to propose? Because we have-
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion to extend the meeting to 11:30.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Question approved.
Before we go into clarifying questions, I was going to ask, maybe, does the applicant want to get up to speak for a little bit? Or usually, we give them a few extra minutes, or, or the applicant's architect?
My name's Stuart Grunell, architect. I think Scott did a really good job of describing the project. You know, we worked through a lot of issues. Basically, a lot of the issues that we're working through were, are existing conditions that we are just formalizing and legalizing. I would add that I don't think any new structures have been added to the site, except for the pergola entry to the south lot. That was the only structure that was built by the new owners. A couple of things were, well, they weren't even moved around. The thing that's, we're calling storage, was originally the garbage. Okay. And so, you know, the main street was really just a, you know, kind of a formal aspect to tie the three sites together. It's only intended to be, you know, some sort of pattern or painting on the sidewalk. We don't want to mess with the pervious asphalt or pervious concrete that's there, because that's a very complicated drainage system. You know, we've addressed all the accessibility issues with regard to the tap room on the south lot, new restrooms. I think, overall, the intent is to make the three sites work homogously and make a better experience for everybody on the coast side. I just wanted to introduce the owners, Patrick Hana and Matt Hogan. They're the new owners.
Hello. Hello. My name is Patrick Hana. Thank you, commissioners, for seeing this this evening. This, this restaurant is about a quarter mile from my house, and I had, I've been in the restaurant business for about 35 years, and really didn't have any initial goals to be buying one last year. But something just clicked in my mind, and I saw how the place was and what it, what it was during COVID, when people were able to hang out with their families and enjoy a reasonably cost meal and enjoy their time on the coast, both locals and people coming from over the hills. So I just inquired. I thought, you know, you only lose on the things you don't try. So, I reached out to now Matt, who's my partner in this business, who also does real estate here locally, his own local company. And we can start looking into it. So, long story short, we were trying to understand through the process of purchasing this business, the history, right? There's a fair amount, but it's not complicated. Obviously, we kind of heard from Scott, the initial blue sky turned into the barn, turned into the barn around 2014. Became more like what it is today, as far as how much is being used during COVID. You know, the community really embraced it. So, when Matt and I came in as the owners, starting in August of last year, we knew that the most important thing was to just recreate the space in the south lot, where people can gather and enjoy the sunshine when we have it. And, and, and meeting with Scott in the planning department happened even prior to escrow, and then carried through to us, then filing for the permits and everything, I think, in November, and on and on. So we've been working with the architect and the planning department and really trying to, I mean, yes, I'm sure we've made some mistakes, obviously, but I think, overall, we're trying to make, without expanding what it is, we're just trying to formalize what it is. And then let it be, you know, the business that it is, that people love on the coast. And, and Matt, you, do you want to say anything yourself, or? But that's initially, that's really our goal, right? Is let this place be what it, what it has become already. We're not looking to expand the physicality of the restaurant space, you know, the kitchen. That barn building has not changed since it was built. The kitchen hasn't changed since it was built. The amount of water or sewage and all that, I mean, nothing, the infrastructure of the business hasn't changed. Now, obviously, as you get success in a business, you have more volume, but I'm pretty sure that no one here is going to say, hey, success for a business is a bad thing. So, we're just trying to make it the best thing it can be for the community, and thank you very much. This is Matt, my partner.
Hey, guys. Matt Hogan, 40-year local resident. Want to thank everybody's patience, and especially everybody who came out. Long night. Thank you very much for your patience. Couple of points for clarification. When we were looking at the barn, we received some documentation that had some requests from the city of Half Moon Bay to the previous owners, that for one reason or another hadn't carried out those requests. And it was important for us to address those items and to take what was not into compliance into compliance and to do things that were being requested, like improve the parking lot, build a trash enclosure. So we started that process early on in earnest, because we wanted to do the right thing here, and I think that's what's carried us to where we are right now. The improvements, we think, are improving safety. That would be removing the access from, to and from the highway from the dirt parking lot. There's some really obvious things. Moving a parking lot from dirt that carries dirt into the right-of-way to gravel has some, has some benefits there as well. One thing is key to mention about the, the, the main street, the walkway, is that creates a direct access from the parking lot to the restaurant, whereas right now, people are having to walk back on Blue Sky Way, which is already a narrow road, or even worse, on Highway One. So that will create some consistency there, which we think will add good usability and just help everybody out. As Scott said, we have met with some of the local owners. One owner in particular had some suggestions for us that we've integrated into the plan, and we think that the fact that she's not here tonight tells me that we're probably good on that front. Some of the things that we're asking are voluntary, is my understanding, that there's not, nothing we really have to do on the parking lot, but we want to. We want to make it better, we want to make it safer, and that's why we're here. And then the last thing I would just say is, just a comment on the garden lot, which is that lot to the south. We feel, and we know that's important, because there are not many places on the coast where you can go with children and enjoy a meal and let them kind of run around. And that was the intent of that lot. It's almost entirely enclosed. There's an active recreational area with some turf and some giant jenga and cornhole, and it's a place where you can sit with your family in a casual recreational dining experience and hang out. And outside of San Bernardino House, there's really not a lot of those places on the coast where you can do that with your children. So we feel like that's important, and we hear that that's an important item for our clients as well. So, that's about it, and looking forward to getting this show on the road here. here.
Our next speaker is Brian Larson.
Hi, my name is Brian Larson. Lived on the coast my whole life, and just like the coast, things change. I started off as a kid, see how everything is, you know, you need to ride your bike around and experience those things. And now, as a father, I look for things that my daughter can also do, and the barn is one of those places that she can go and kind of just be a kid and run and have fun. My only other option, as Matt just read my mind, is coming all the way into Half Moon Bay and going to our other favorite local establishment. But besides that, there's nothing else on the coast to do. So it is something I love to go do, and, you know, I need to get a bite as well as let that kid run. And I hope that this is something that can be approved and opened so that we can enjoy it to its fullest extent.
Mike Alafano.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for what you do. I know you don't do it for the money. But one request would be, maybe we can move this to, these type of meetings to the beginning. I know you probably didn't know about that, but maybe next time. We can always get better. But my name is Mike Alafano. I was born and raised here on the coast. Came back here in 2000 and bought a house and started a business, raised a family. I have three kids. This is an awesome spot for our family. You can ride the coastal trail, come up safely. We don't have to navigate. At the time, we couldn't get across, you know, or rather, the bridge went under. So this is a great spot for us to come. We could bring the dog, and we could have fun outside. And I think it's been a great spot. I've been involved with my business with all of the owners since the inception. We do IT support here on the coast. And, you know, one of the things that I appreciate with another local business is they use local vendors, and we're one of them. I also love that they employ local employees, and they support local events, community fundraisers, the list goes on. So I'm happy to support this project. I think the council or the staff report is spot on, and I appreciate that. It's awesome to come to a meeting and see a staff report that has all the information I need to support a project like this, but also to speak on it. Couple things, it seems like everything that has been mentioned has been addressed in their plan. And I know both of the owners, and I think that they're, you know, community members that are willing to do the right thing, and I appreciate that. So often, you find people taking shortcuts and not doing it right the first time, and it ends up being a difficult situation, to say the least. Let's see. I think, you know, that's about it. So I appreciate your time, and have a great night.
Our next speaker is Paul McGregor.
Good evening again. I got to say, I've been a member of the Miramar neighborhood for quite a long time, probably since 2000. And Bridge Going Out and all that other kind of fun stuff, you either walk or you ride your bicycle to go to the establishment, be it Blue Sky at one point in time, the barn, and then the new owner at this point in time. They've done a really good job on promoting this project. And what I would suggest is that the concern about traffic going in and out, ingress and egress, the main center parking lot, coming from the north, turning into the right only, with signage that shows it, and curbage also. And then, same thing when you leave, they go to the south only, with curbage that points the people in the right direction to go south, so we don't have another incident like we did a few weeks ago. It's very important that we take into traffic concerns, especially in this day and age. And I would say that the council and the county and everybody else should probably look at turnarounds at Marada Road or somewhere close to that to slow the traffic down, to where people actually slow down, let people in, and don't hurt anybody in the process. Think about your mayor's son.
Our next speaker is Paul Nagengas.
Thank you, Paul Nagengas. Scott mentioned about earlier Ken Coverdale, plants and coffee. This is what originally happened in '07 and amended in '09. Ken was a visionary. He's able to take a piece of underutilized land, essentially dirt, and that's what came up again with plants and coffee. Problem with success, things tend to grow unpermitted for 10 years. The intensified use has changed over the years. And I hope you had a chance to read the letter that I submitted to you. There was a lot of information in that letter, and I'm only going to have time to press on some key issues. I'm very dedicated to highway safety on Highway 1. And this project proposes to utilize the intersection of Marada Road and Highway 1 as the main access point to and from the proposed intensified use. Remember, in '07-'09, that was a secondary access, the alley. It wasn't the main, they didn't have the amount of traffic that's being generated now. So I would request that multimodal safety studies be completed to support any type of proposed access here. This intersection is within the county of San Mateo and connects to State Highway 1. So the city's engineer of Half Moon Bay did not comment on this intersection, because it's in the county of San Mateo. And that's why I asked earlier about perhaps a project incorporates all the different agencies to do a project there. So I would ask, was the county of San Mateo asked, not about the project itself, about accessing the intersection of Marada Road with the additional traffic? And then, again, what numbers are we talking about, the number of traffic? There are neighborhood conversations that included that they drive to Roosevelt Boulevard in lieu of Marada Road to make the left turns to go onto North Mall Highway 1. Additionally, conversations have included how difficult it is to enter Marada Road east of Highway 1, when traffic from west side of Highway 1, Marada Road uses the left turn pocket as a wait area to wait to enter in northbound traffic. So there's things going on there. And since Memorial Day weekend, we've had a fatality, and there was an accident out there. That's just, it's Memorial Day weekend this year. Also, in addition, observations have indicated the proposed parking in the north lot is insufficient for the proposed intensified use. Been out there where parking is overflowed into the neighborhoods, even with the north lot full. Now, I don't know if that's just occasionally, maybe it's once a month, I don't know, but just the time I was out there, and the pictures indicated, it was, they were outside of the parking area. So again, without a study to analyze this, what parking were you doing? And was it just for the main lot covered area? Because they're also talking about seating area in the south lot. Was any of that factored in for traffic? I think it's great. You got a place to eat and drink and play with kids. But again, if you're driving there, then the cars have to park somewhere if the north lot's full. Just quickly, I have a couple more issues. Furthermore, what has changed for the fire department to allow a 16-foot wide alley as a two-way traffic roadway? The original approval in '07 and amended in '09 was, again, a secondary access for less than standard width roadway for, or fire access. Now, the current request is to make the alley the main access point. Again, I believe there should be a comprehensive analysis, if you have four more aforementioned concerns, prior to approving the intensified use here, since the cafe was originally an accessory to the retail plans. Thank you for hearing my concerns.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak who may not have filled out a card?
I just have two online.
Oh, and we have some online speakers. Okay.
Wait, we have one, Brian Bodis.
Oh, did, I thought, oh, go ahead. Come on.
Yeah.
Good evening, council, yeah. Good evening. I'm Brian Bodis. I live at 41 Valencia. I live right behind the barn, and we have an ADU back there, and the driveway just goes right into where the current garbage and recycling area is. So it's not, it's not great right now, and it hasn't been since we've been there. But the first things the new owners did when they got the place was to just listen to us, listen to our concerns, and address them. And they've done that. They've done it all along the way with us, who live right behind there. And you can tell they've done it with the design, you know, of the property. We just had concerns about the garbage, the parking, not so much of a concern for us. A lot of people walk back and forth on the road back there, and sometimes that can be a little dangerous. So they've alleviated that with the walkway. I too have concerns about the road, you know, pulling out onto the highway. We do that every day, me and our kids, my wife. I don't know that that's an issue with the barn, but it definitely is an issue with the county and maybe the city. And that obviously will be addressed with the current incidences that have happened there. I recommend approval. These are great guys that are doing a great thing, and they're not adding to this place. They're just improving it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Donald Sheeran. I live about 50 yards from the barn and have been going there ever since the original barn was built. And it was a nursery and a place you could go for breakfast. And I think this project's a great project. These guys, great guys, very responsible, local guys. And they supply something which is really good for the whole coast. It's great people that can come there on bicycles. My only concern is just one thing, and that is Joaquin, the mayor's son, got killed coming out of that turning last week. It's very dangerous. I did carpool on that street for four years with three kids in the car, and I was nervous every time I pulled out of there. I think Marada Road, that should be a right-hand turn only, just like the barn right now is right-hand turn only. Because if you go left, where I live, and I live right there, I was right there when that accident happened. I live in one of the closest houses to that. When you go left there, it is the most dangerous left-hand turn you can imagine. Cars come flying around that corner, you know? Rarely do I need to use all my abilities driving, but that I need 100%. So I think that should be looked at. But as far as this project, there's nothing wrong with it. It's great. It's a great thing for the community, and I can't say enough about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll start with online. Crystal Lynn is first.
Thank you so much. I have comments both as the Chamber of Commerce, as well as a resident that lives just within 100 yards of the barn. First, as the Chamber of Commerce, this is a beautiful project. The city's currently going through a deficit, and one of the ways we are trying to help with that deficit is work on our tourism and make things a little bit more aesthetically pleasing. And this project being so visible from Highway 1 and so beautiful is actually going to be very much to our benefit for people driving down Highway 1 and seeing it and spending some sales tax money here. So really, really love that. Love everything that people have been saying about it being a family-friendly place. It absolutely is, and there's a few of those to go around. I would like to note to one of the comments earlier, usually when the north lot has overflow parking, I know from tons of experience, it's more people going to the beach than actually stopping and going into the barn. So when that parking lot overflows, I don't think that that is the barn's fault. Most of those people are just getting out of their car and walking straight down to Miramar Beach. And then, as a resident of that neighborhood, I think the fact that they have chosen to put the little fence up on that parking lot does help that corner, reducing one more turnout. Agree with everybody that hopefully that turn becomes a right turn only as soon as possible. But I don't think that that corner is a problem of this project. They are just doing wonderful things there. As many have mentioned, they've been great communicators and stewards of that project. They come in with enthusiasm. Just today, I've had a local resident come into the chamber office to complain about some other commercial buildings on Highway 1. So I look forward to working with the planning commission to help the other commercial buildings look as beautiful as this one. And kudos to the owners for taking the leadership step in doing this of their own accord, because they want to, not because they have to. So as the Chamber of Commerce and as a neighborhood resident, 700 thumbs up. It's beautiful. Love it. Please approve it.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have is Scott Fraser.
All right. Good evening. This is Scott Fraser. I'm a 46-year resident, a local attorney in town. I live just down the street on the corner of Alameda and Alcatraz, so I'm extraordinarily familiar with this area. And I want to offer a lot of support for this project. You know, I've noticed that as much as I've seen the parking possibly increase in that area, at my section, where a lot of people used to park to go to the beach, it has thinned out incredibly. So I don't think there's a real net impact of additional parking for this area. I think it is more that some of the people that come here to this section of the neighborhood for their beach access just happen to park up there so they can grab a burger without having to walk and park twice or something like that. In addition, once I'm a restaurateur in Pacifica, I own a small similar place that's very close to the Pacifica Pier. And I know how important it is for there to be an establishment where locals and tourists alike can stop and take a load off, their kids can hang out, have a good time, or their dad drinks a beer, mom can drink a beer too, I guess. And nobody's getting rushed off or anything. You can relax. There's a lot of room. This is a great place, and we need more places like this. It's an asset to the community. It's an asset to our tourists. I urge you to approve it. And since everyone's had something to say on this, I hope you don't make Marada a no-left-hand turn lane. That's just my opinion, though. I don't offer it. Good night.
Thank you. I have no one further online.
Okay, thank you. So at this point, we will start with clarifying questions, and we'll start with Commissioner Gorn.
Thank you. Hi. I also do love the barn, by the way. You guys left off OPL, which is one of the three places we go. But I have a question. So this is, this project, this place is like, it's like the definition of creep. Like, it's, in the past, it's been asked for forgiveness, not for permission. And it, because I remember when, what's his name, Ken Coverdale, started this, it was a plant store with coffee. He just wanted to serve coffee. And so it's evolved, right? So, but the sort of flip side of that is that you guys are trying to come into compliance and to make it legal. And so I do like that. I had questions about parking, so let me ask about parking. So if we were hearing this for the first time, like, if this was a new project, I'm trying to figure out how much parking we would ask for. I don't know. And you said, one parking space for every 45 square feet of indoor dining, which doesn't apply, because there now is no indoor dining, but I think that's a little specious. Do we know how much dining is in, like, how many square feet is covered, since that's- Since that's kind of indoor dining, like how much? I'm trying to get a sense of what what the parking requirement should be, like what everybody else faces around there. Look at Hengetsu Sushi, and I look at the Chinese place, the Asian King. They're very small footprints with a lot of parking around them. This one is a large footprint with a very small parking around it. So what is the square? Do you guys know what the square footage is of the indoors, the the covered area? Okay. And how much parking is is supplied here? It didn't I didn't really get that. It looked I when I, you know, counted seventeen spots, but it's more than that, right?
Scott and I have a little bit different calculation here, but I it's one to forty-five square feet.
Right.
And I have twenty-six spaces.
You have twenty-six?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the required is twenty-two.
Chair Gossett, if I could add a little more detail. And we also require one space per employee, and we've estimated that,
Oh, right.
you know, at any given day, not not the, you know, extreme, you know, Fourth of July weekend, but just an average day, there's the the business has four employees.
And I would add that calculation for the required twenty-two spaces plus the additional
Plus the four.
The additional four, that's why we have twenty-six. We are right on the money. And that that calculation comes from the total covered area, not just the indoor, but also the outdoor. The outdoor covered area.
Okay.
But not the beer garden?
No, not the beer garden, yeah. But that's outdoors. That actually is outdoor space. That's interesting. I didn't think there was that much parking. That's my only clarifying question. I have other questions.
I would also add that, you know, formalizing the the parking spaces adds to the organization of the site. Right now, it's all ad hoc parking, and it may look more full than it actually is.
So also, right now, currently, when you drive back there, I actually couldn't drive back there today because somebody was kind of double-parked on that road, and then the trashcans were out there, and they're going out into the road. I assume that is part of the plan to get those off of there, right?
Yes, we allow no parking within the ten-foot setback, and that was one of the agreements we had with the adjacent neighbors on the other side of Blue Sky Way, was that she has trouble backing out of her garage because of cars parked there. So we're going to make sure there's no parking within that setback.
And so the the garbage cans that I saw, the the big dumpsters that I saw today that are like out in the road and they're open and there's trash all over the ground, that's like that's different now, right?
Yeah, we've pushed the trash enclosure into the into the site and not in the ten-foot setback. So there's nothing
That's what I thought.
There's nothing in the ten-foot setback from the north lot to the south lot.
Thanks.
We need a five-minute break, or two-minute break, actually. Okay, welcome back. Commissioner Rudek, do you have any clarifying questions?
I have one. I guess for the applicant's architect, the pedestrian walkway, the so-called main street, are there any thoughts about safety features for that, given that it's going through the active parking lot of the main lot?
I guess the biggest thing with the the main street and the safety feature, I hear what you're saying, and my hope was that it would act like a crosswalk. You know, I think it's it's fairly well ingrained into all of us drivers that when you see a striped walk, you know, you slow down or stop, and that was the intent. And I think the speed that vehicles will be traveling in there, it's fairly congested and hard to get into. I think they would be going at a low rate of speed, and and some change in in surface would be a good indication.
I think the barn's hours are, I assume, such that it's open after dark sometimes at some time of the year?
So, yeah, during winter, eight P M. is dark, obviously, and this time of year, we still have beautiful sunset around eight P M. So, yeah, there are times.
Are there is there lighting in the main lot planned for?
There is existing lighting in the main lot that's still, yeah, still there. The majority of the main lot is going to stay as existing. The biggest change for the the main lot is the covered area for more all-weather use.
Yeah.
And then, I mean, the bathroom, we have one single bathroom right now. So that's that's hard, even even with lower volume, not even a busy weekend, but you've got staff and everyone else that need to use facilities, so.
Yeah, I'm just I'm just curious about the the you're obviously going to generate much more pedestrian traffic in that main lot as people head to the south lot, so we want that to be as safe as possible.
Yeah, you you see on the plans those in between the parking spaces on the south side of the main lot, those are those are lighting bollards.
Scott, are there any variances required on this project?
No.
If this were a new project, would there be any variances on it?
Nope.
Has the city engineer reviewed this project?
Yes, and provided concurrence in writing, so.
And has the applicant made all the recommendations that the city engineer has asked of them?
Yes, that's that's correct.
And the project is in conformance with the feedback provided by the Architectural Review Committee?
Yes.
And the existing use of the restaurant is not is it considered a nuisance in any way by the neighbors or the city?
No, no, not at this point, so.
Is there anything we can do to address the left-hand turn out of the main parking lot today? For example, could we attach a condition of putting plastic bollards up in the median so that it's not possible to make a left-hand turn out of the parking lot or a left-hand turn from Highway One into the parking lot? I've seen that in on Pacific Coast Highway in Southern California this weekend, all over the place. So I know it's something Caltrans can do. Is that something we could attach as a condition of approval?
Not at this point. It would require review by Caltrans. It would it really would be something that, you know, Caltrans would have to initiate, you know, for improvements to the median. You know, maybe Winter can, you know, expand upon that, so.
Yeah, I don't think we could simply require the applicant to put in the bollards since there is it's in Caltrans jurisdiction. But if you wanted to direct them to ask Caltrans to do it or, you know, have staff take some steps to communicate with Caltrans about that possibility, that would be a reasonable condition.
Okay, great. Thank you. Those are my only clarifying questions.
Vice Chair Joanna's?
Yes, I do have some clarifying questions. Speaking of Caltrans, since this is the first thing on my mind now, in a prior condition of approval for the project, not your project, in a in the one that was in, I think, two thousand and nine, there was supposed to have been constructed some kind of median on the right-of-way portion of the entrance or exit of the facility itself. And that was never done by the previous owner, I don't know, two owners ago. So if that was a condition of approval that was placed in that prior condition of approval, why would it not be something that we could ask of today? Not the bollards, but the some kind of restriction or a physical barrier coming out of the parking lot onto Highway One? So that's a question that I'm wondering if that we could to restrict that left turn, turn, it would only be a right turn only. And I think that was a condition of approval in the two thousand and nine, two thousand and yeah, in the two thousand and nine. So that would be something that I would think that we could reinstate, and that would be something that would guide the drivers out of the parking lot so that they couldn't make the left turn. That's something I would consider as a condition of approval. The signage that the city engineer approved based on their review and survey, I'm not sure where that signage would be posted. You know, if you you could tell me where that signage is requested to be posted because it didn't say exactly where. And if we could, instead of saying no left turns, why do we not? Why can we not say right turns only? Maybe having a positive message would benefit rather than because we know the negative message isn't working. And that would be coupled with that barrier that would be asked to be placed in there in in that lot. So the question is, why wasn't that? You know, and maybe you can't answer this, but if you can't answer it, why can't we require it now? This the other question I have is regarding the alley as being the primary access. Is that what I heard to the site? No, it's not the primary access? Okay.
The primary access would still be the the main entrance to the main lot.
From Highway One?
From Highway One.
Okay. So again, you know, maybe a sign that says, "Coming from the north, going south, right turn only," or coming from this, you know, I don't know. We've got to ask, you know, Caltrans to do some kind of signage on on Highway One to restrict that left turn coming in from the south and only require a right turn coming in from the south. So that's the other thing. This question is for staff. Page two of this agenda report mentions the categorical exemption from the from SEQA pursuant to Class One, but I see elsewhere it's pursuant to Class Three. And then I see the response that you have you've given in the in the questions that I had made earlier today, response to a Class Three SEQA exception to the exemption. I would really like to have that clarification because it makes a difference as to the use of the the expansion or the increased intensity use of this of this this business. The other question I have is regarding the use of the business. Would seating, the number of seating for eating, for eating, because I'm assuming people come there to eat and drink and have their children play, and, you know, it's a great space. I'm wondering if you need to count seating versus floor area space for parking? Because I'm not really sure if people carpool, you know, how do they get there? They get there in cars and bikes, which is a good thing. So I was just wondering if, you know, if finding a way, because we don't have the traditional interior seating and we have exterior seating, we could look at possibly the amount of seating, maybe try and translate it somewhere to what that would mean as far as the number of cars that would need spaces for parking. So that's something that I I have questions about. Thanks.
I'd be happy to answer the questions. So to start out, the the condition of approval that was referenced was from two thousand and seven, and I I think I actually got it wrong on the first staff report for May twenty-eighth, and we kind of clarified things in the the memo and then the the current staff report. And the the condition of approval that you referenced was entitled "Off-Site Improvement Plans." And it was within the third or the second paragraph of the condition of approval, it states, "The plan shall show improvements along Highway One and the entrance on Highway One for a right turn in and right turn out only traffic control island and signage. If Caltrans does not permit the traffic control island, the applicant shall install the necessary signage. The applicant shall provide pedestrian access across the frontage of the property along Highway One." Now, clearly, the right turn out and right turn only traffic control island wasn't installed, as we all know, but some of the signage was. And I did not see anything in in the the city records. We, you know, requested the the hard copy files from off-site and, you know, dug through all the previous files, and we didn't see anything sort of post-approval that were this, you know, any correspondence with Caltrans or anything that took place to, you know, for this this new traffic control island. So we we landed on that, okay, they they installed the signage to to meet this requirement. So that said, you know, as Winter alluded to, So, that said, you know, as Winter alluded to, I think the commission could, you know, add a condition of approval encouraging staff to reach out to Caltrans and explore the option of, you know, adding some, you know, maybe some delineator similar to what you see on Highway 92 East, separating the traffic coming from, from the south. Something of that nature, we could certainly look into. Now, as far as the, you know, correspondence and review by the city engineer for additional signage, it really resulted from staff going out and witnessing some of the left-hand turns taking place, and then discussions back at City Hall, hey, you know, maybe some larger signage or some additional signage on the other side of the driveway aisle may benefit, you know, motorists from, you know, maybe not even noticing the left-hand turn sign that's there currently. And the idea was that the applicants would provide the details on the new signage with the building permit submittal to be reviewed to the satisfaction of the city engineer and community development director. This may take some, you know, sort of coordination with the applicant to arrive on the additional signage that's needed and what that's going to look like. And, you know, of course, the commission needs to be comfortable with, you know, the staff's review of, you know, working with the applicant to come up with a signage that, you know, the city engineer is satisfied with. So, the third question had to do with the main access. And I, my guess is that this partially has to do with fire district access. And, you know, we had multiple discussions with the, the fire marshal with this project from an early phase of the submittal up to a couple of weeks ago. We met in person. And I asked him this exact same question, okay, you know, the alleyway seems a little narrow, and, you know, is this okay? You know, we want to make sure this is okay. And the answer was, it is because the main fire access is from Cabrillo Highway. All the fire district infrastructure is on the east side of the building, and that allows the fire district to bring in the fire truck along the Cabrillo Highway access. Maybe that requires, you know, shutting down a lane of traffic while they fight a fire on the site, if need be. And the fire district connections are on the east side of the building. So that was very helpful for set staff to understand the primary access for the fire district's purposes. Now, as far as the CEQA exemption, I apologize about the inconsistency on the CEQA reference. You know, I think the staff report keeps it general, 15303, or it does mention Class One. That may have been a typo, the Class One. Winter, maybe you could help out on what specific class of this, this section 13303 would make sense for this project, and we can certainly update the resolution.
Yeah, I think either or, and/or both could apply. Class One does have some qualifying language that, it consists of basically operation permitting minor alteration of existing structures involving negligible or no expansion of existing or former use, and perhaps this is what Vice Chair Joannas was referring to. So it would be a question whether this involved any expansion of use. CEQA is not a code enforcement statute. It considers environmental impacts from existing conditions. So I don't, I don't know if, Scott, you have opinions about whether this action would actually expand the existing use or not. But regardless, Class Three applies and does not have that qualifying language, and in fact, permits kind of quite a lot more development under the exemption than I think what is proposed here. It would permit an entire new restaurant or similar structure. So I think probably a safe bet is just to go with Class Three, but I think there's an argument to be made for Class One as well.
Okay. And then as far as calculating off-street parking spaces, our code relies upon interior floor area where the public is served, and it does not reference seats. So our zoning code currently, that's what we're bound to. In the future, once we do get into a comprehensive update of our zoning code, that's certainly something that the commission could look at as far as modifying. But right now, off-street parking is calculated based off of interior floor area where the public is served, plus the spaces for employees.
I have a follow-up question to that. It's, I know what the law says and what the zoning says, but common sense says that people are not going to be eating without seating, and they're going to be arriving, those people are going to be arriving in cars, whether they're sitting indoors or outdoors. So, you know, I'm just curious how logic and common sense play into this. The seating area is where people are eating. This is not a, you know, full-service restaurant where the waiters go and deliver food, is what I understand. People stand in line and get their food, and they go sit in the facility that's provided them to sit. So that is an eating area, because in restaurants, people don't eat off a floor, they eat off of seats. And so I was just wondering how this all works out as far as, you know, providing, you know, some kind of, you know, relationship between the number of seats that people are sitting to eat their meal, whether it's indoor or outdoor, people are still coming into the space either by bicycles, and we don't know how many bicycles are coming in with their folks, or whether they're coming in, or maybe they're coming in carpools with, you know, people coming and having a nice visit with, you know, a group of people. I don't know. And so if they're coming in carpools, great, you know, how do we know that?
Through the chair, we did have quite a bit of discussion with the architect for this project on, you know, what makes sense as far as, you know, calculating the off-street parking. And kind of what we arrived on was that the covered area is going to be utilized quite a bit more than the further-away uncovered space on the south lot. That it really made sense to calculate the parking based off of the new outdoor dining space that's covered. Another factor of this is we've got quite a few other businesses in town that don't necessarily provide off-street parking for uncovered dining spaces. So we really want to be consistent with, for, with all of our businesses in town. So that was another sort of item that came up in discussion, so.
And then one additional question regarding Caltrans. If this project has nothing to do with Caltrans, why was this circulated to Caltrans?
Yeah, and the reason why we routed plans to them for comment request is because the site has frontage on the Caltrans right-of-way. So it's really more of a courtesy, you know, if they have, you know, maybe a project that we're unaware of coming forward that may affect this business or the business may affect their project. We wanted to give them an opportunity to respond, and then, you know, who knows? Maybe, maybe the proposed project would affect something that Caltrans has coming, so. And we routed them, you know, twice. We double-checked with them. Each time they provided responses in writing that they had no comments.
And the county was not consulted at all regarding the intersection that is going to be commonly used for, you know, accessing the site? Because that, that intersection is, I think, it's a Caltrans road, but the Marada Road, correct me if I'm wrong, is county?
Just flipping to the subject property aerial photograph here. We did not route plans to the county of San Mateo. And the primary reason for that is there is no contiguous land with the county. So the, although it looks fairly random, the yellow city boundary line actually includes some undeveloped Caltrans right-of-way that's within city limits that would not be developed, so. Let's see, is this? Oh, okay. So, so what I'm referring to is the land between sort of the northern green line and the, the yellow line is undeveloped Caltrans right-of-way within city limits that would not be developed as part of this project. So the county land is not contiguous with the proposal.
So, but the road is, the road that will be used to access that north lot, right, would be Marada Road, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And is that Marada Road at the county?
Yes.
Would the county, would, I mean, would staff think that the county would want to comment on the level of use there? I just felt that perhaps the county would have something to say.
Yeah, and we did not route plans to the county of San Mateo during the inter-agency review.
Is it a standard operating procedure to notify the county for an intersection like this where there's no change in usage?
No, no, it's not. Normally, we'll route them plans if it affects some of their property or if it's contiguous with county lands, so.
But I don't.
County right-of-way, so.
I don't think there's been a determination that there's no change in usage. There is a change in usage from the permitted, from the existing permit right now. There is a definite change in usage. In fact, the report says that this is, the report that was submitted by, to us this evening, it's 6:30, actually says it's substantially different than it was approved in 2009.
I'm talking, we can take that for discussion, but I mean, my interpretation is, there's a current usage, a current traffic pattern. Pattern's going to be modified slightly. I mean, but it's not material to, like, the functioning of the intersection, but, I mean, that's, we can take for discussion.
Through the chair?
Go ahead.
I don't know if this is, it matters or not, but isn't, isn't the one-half of Highway one Half Moon Bay territory? Isn't that how, is that right? I can never remember that, but I think that's right.
I want to say that we were shown a map during the Caltrans project. It was a LAFCO map, I believe, where part of the roadway is Half Moon Bay. I think the other part might be county.
It, my recollection, and I've looked at this quite a bit, is the city's jurisdiction ends at Highway one where the yellow line is, right here. And it jogs over to the left or jogs over to the west, goes along the ocean, along the road in front of the Miramar Inn. And then when you get to the Sam's Chowder House and the Beach House, those, it jogs back over, goes to the middle of the highway, and then comes back around. So no, I'm pretty sure that the city property ends where the yellow line is, right there.
Does that sound right?
That sounds right. The yellow line shown on the aerial photograph is accurate.
I had a couple of questions about the north parking lot. Maybe we could just put a picture up, if that's possible? Oh, I thought, okay. So I'm noticing the angled parking going in. Will those cars need to back out? How are they going to be able to turn around to get out?
Through the chair, sorry to do this, but I'd like to make a motion to go to midnight.
Okay, so moved? And all in favor?
I second it, and all.
Okay.
Is that okay? Okay.
Aye.
So I'm trying to understand, like, you know, how cars will get out of that parking lot?
Yes, so there is ample backup space where, where, let's see, I believe it's, since it's angled, it's a little less than 20, 20 feet, where you can back up and then get out. I mean, it's, it is a little bit tight, you know, if you've got a larger vehicle. But, you know, what, you know, what I've discussed with the business owners is that, you know, maybe the spaces deepest in would be designated for employees, so.
And is the north, will this parking lot be lit?
No, no, no electrical or irrigation is included at this point, so.
That's it for me. So would you guess, Commissioner Gorn, would you like to make your comments?
Well, I guess the, you know, you can't really hold them responsible for the horrible traffic that's in that spot. I did wonder, when people do go right, when we make people go right and they want to go left, where do they go? I went down, like, they go into another, they go into the board shop and make a U-turn, I guess.
You learn to park somewhere. You learn to go the other way coming out.
Yeah, I know. Anyway, that's, that's not really their problem, so. I just don't see a way around it. Except, you know, a no-left turn on Marada, but that's Caltrans issue, so. That, I mean, to me, that was the two big issues, were the parking and the, and the traffic, because it is in increased use, and that is, there are going to be, it is increased use. But I think the 26 spaces seems adequate to me. And I just don't know what to say about the traffic.
I agree with Commissioner Gorn. The parking seems well-handled. The, we have, of course, LUP policies that require us to support a vibrant business environment in the city. I think this is a project that is, is well geared to do that. I guess I'd be in favor of some creative approach to a tougher prohibition on a left turn out of the main lot. Getting, getting Caltrans to do something or asking the city or the applicant for some, some lower-budget approach to that as a condition of approval.
Yes, so I think the parking is a major improvement over what's going on today. I know I always dread going through that parking lot and avoiding the metal piece of signage that's jutting up. I'm afraid it's going to puncture my tires, so I hope you take care of that as part of the project. It might be nice to maybe add floodlights from the existing building onto the parking at night so that you have a safe place. I think that would be something I'd consider, but I don't think it's necessary for us to litigate that here. I would like to see a condition attached to have the applicant work with Caltrans and the city to come up with ideally bollards or some other type of restriction. The concept of a median, I think, could make sense. It could also create catastrophes for people coming in and not seeing it if they take too wide of a turn, so I want to be cautious again about not litigating a particular solution, but just encouraging all the city, the applicant, and Caltrans to try to come up with something that addresses the left-hand turn. I do think it's problematic. I do think it's an improvement. I mean, just state it clearly, this is a major improvement in safety. You don't have people walking on Blue Sky Way. They're going to be encouraged to use. They're going to be encouraged to use the main street. You're blocking off the parking and the fact that people are walking along Highway One. The fact that you're gating the north parking lot is a significant improvement to the, to the safety of the project. So I think those are all things to be commended. I also just want to say, like, this visually takes what was already a pretty good project and makes it a lot better. I think the standard that I always like to say is, I'd like to see an excellent project every time and I'm willing to settle for above average. This is an excellent project. So I think that you guys have really put a lot of thought into this and kudos for being proactive in taking what was a bit of a mess and doing a really good job of working with city staff to clean it up. So I think that you've addressed the major concerns that I've observed and the things that I've heard from public testimony. I would like to see some kind of floodlights or something in the parking lot, just so it's easier to get in and out at night. Yeah, no, I'm with the, I'm very supportive of this project. I would just like to add a condition of approval that the applicant work with Caltrans.
Did you want to discuss whether this is an increased use versus from the existing permitted use and what that permit included and versus what it is now?
If it was a new project, it wouldn't require any additional parking. And our job is to say, does it conform with the?
Okay, so then the next question would be, what, what, what is this for purposes of making sure that we're consistent with the LUP? Is this considered with regard to the environmental finding? Is this a Class 1 or is it a Class 3? Because in the same sentence, there's several different places that say, I guess the Exhibit A Findings of Evidence states in the same paragraph, it's a exhibit, it's a Class 1 exemption, which would require us to figure out whether it's a negligible or significant, or significant expansion, or whether it's a Class 3 exemption.
I'm fine with a Class 3 exemption.
How about the rest of the question?
Well, and that's, so the increased uses from the previous permit?
Yes, so if, so what, what, then I would ask.
There were two permits that were issued. There was a 2009 permit and a 2004, 2007? Okay, and the 2009 envisioned a restaurant? And that was the original Blue Sky Cafe. So if we did a Class 3, we don't even have to have a conversation about expanded usage.
But it was a limited restaurant? It was, it was?
But, but I think, but I think to winner's point.
There were conditions of approval and blah, blah, blah.
But to winner's point, this is not a, we're not here to go address a prior wrong. There is existing use that happens. And I've heard testimony from the applicant, from the applicant's representative, the architect, and from city staff that there's no increase over the current usage on the project.
But that's not what Class 1 says. And maybe instead of, you know, trying to guess, maybe we can get a legal advice on that.
Or maybe we can just go to Class 3 and be done with it.
Well, I don't know if that's correct.
Well, I think there's an argument to be made for both. That's what we heard from.
So let's argue.
Is anybody here uncomfortable with using Class 3?
Yes.
I'm not.
I don't even know the difference.
I would defer to the city attorney.
What's the difference?
Okay, so Class 1 is for existing facilities. It consists of the operation, repair, maintenance, permitting, leasing, licensing, or minor alteration of existing public or private structures, facilities, et cetera, involving negligible or no expansion of existing or former use. So I would make the.
But unpermitted?
It does not matter whether that existing use was permitted or not. Sequo does not care about that. It is just whatever the existing use is today.
So people can do basically whatever they want and then ask for forgiveness?
For sequo purposes, that is absolutely correct. Can, Class 3 is for new construction or conversion of small structures. And the guideline provides Class 3 consists of construction and location of limited numbers of new small facilities or structures, installation of small new equipment and facilities in small structures, and the conversion of existing small structures from one use to another where only minor modifications are made in the exterior of the structure. The numbers of structures described in this section are the maximum allowable on any legal parcel. And then there's a list of examples, including a store, motel, office, restaurant, or similar structure not involving the use of significant amounts of hazardous substances and not exceeding 2,500 square feet in floor area. That's just an example, so you don't have to abide by that, and I just provide that for context. Also, there's absolutely no prohibition on listing 2. If you find that both apply, you can say both apply.
I mean, from the definition I heard, both 1 and 3 apply.
That's what our lawyer's telling us.
So did you have a motion?
Sure, I'd like to make, make a motion to approve, well, are we done with discussion? I'd like to make the motion to approve the project with the sequo exemptions 1 and 3 applied to the project. And I would like to make the recommendation that the applicant work with city staff and Caltrans to come up with a better solution for eliminating any left-hand turns out of the project, which could include bollards or other things as approved between the three parties.
I'd like to add to that motion. If we could also add with, to this condition, that they also work with Caltrans to see how they can include that physical restriction or a physical barrier from the parking lot so that they can only make right turns.
I will modify, I'll modify my request to suggest that they look at that as an option.
Is that a recommendation or a condition?
A condition of approval is to work with Caltrans. All of those things are a condition of approval to work with Caltrans, the city, and the applicant together to come up with a better solution. And we've included the concrete median as a suggestion and the bollards as a suggestion as well.
Another suggestion could be you can also put some kind of barrier on your property so you don't have to work with Caltrans to.
We're happy to add whatever signage, striping, you know, we can have a right-hand turn only, you know, just like a lane.
A barrier to make sure everybody just goes through the right.
I've made my motion.
Yeah, curve, yeah.
I've made my motion.
A curve would work.
Could I get a second?
I second the motion.
Do you want to have any discussion, any other discussion?
I would like to have a discussion on what we just, on the second motion. So if, so we were talking about, and I got the nod from, from the applicant here saying that they would really consider strongly to try and make sure that people exiting from that parking lot to make a right turn only, they would try their best to make sure that they can have some kind of a physical barrier so that people restricts it. I mean, you know, whatever it is.
Well, we're, we're happy to add whatever signage and striping. When you get to physical barriers, it gets a little more complicated. And then tertiary and fire and Caltrans. I mean, we've submitted to Caltrans twice now and they haven't responded. We abandoned the north end of the north lot because dealing with them is so ominous.
Right, I'm talking about what's on your property so that you don't have to wait for Caltrans to approve stuff, right?
Right, right, right.
So that's what I'm focused on is, is making sure that, you know, to avoid any delays, it's something that you can voluntarily do or you can, you know, the recommendation would be to add some kind of physical barrier on your lot.
I would offer more expeditiously. We'd be willing to do and work with the city engineer to enact whatever recommendations they have.
I think that would work as a condition of approval because, because working with Caltrans is going to take forever.
I, my, my recommendation is to reach out to Caltrans, work with the city. I don't expect, if Caltrans is non-responsive, like, it's not a requirement that they get Caltrans to conform.
Right, no, of course.
The request is work with, I mean, ultimately, the city's responsible for determining whether this is a safe project, so.
But in addition to Caltrans, working with Caltrans, which is a given, also putting some kind of condition of approval to work with the city to make sure that people turn right out of their own parking lot, out of their own, on their own property.
I think my proposal covered that.
Does it?
Yeah.
Okay, then let's go.
We've got a full comment.
Sure.
I have a very simple recommendation. So the main parking lot, where you come in from the north and you go out to the south, you put a V-shaped curb with maybe a little island in there where people can't take a left and they can only take a right going in. That'll solve all the problems. You can't take a left-hand turn if you're going to hit a curb. Think about it.
Actually, that's exactly what the 2007 recommendation did say to do, and that's what I'm, I suggested to staff to include in the, in the, in the conditions of approval. So that's, I would like to add that in the conditions of approval.
I, I don't feel comfortable coming up with the design like this at this moment. I think that's on the table, the applicant can, so I've made my, my proposal, we've got a second. Could I ask, I mean, I, I don't want to make any changes, I mean, to, to what I propose. I do not think it's appropriate for us to design that type of security feature from the dais. We have some recommendations, and I think we've, I've given direction in my motion, so I'd like to just move forward with the vote.
Well, I'd like to modify your recommendation, your motion to add this condition or, you know, recommendation in there.
I'm, I'm not going to change my, my, my motion.
Well, as Commissioner Hernandez said, ultimately, it's the city's responsibility to assure that this is a safe project. So I, I agree with Commissioner Hernandez that the motion will require the applicant and the city, you know, with reaching out to Caltrans to do the, the best possible safety feature here.
Do you have any comments?
But, but this, but this was a previous condition of approval already. It's a small thing.
But it's not applicable to this project, so it's not something that, it's, we're not doing enforcement, we're not going backward and doing enforcement. So I, I think there are many ways to solve this. It's 2024, not 2007 or 2009. There are many ways to solve this, and the city engineer and the applicant are perfectly capable of coming up with a good solution. I don't think we need to litigate the exact solution here.
I don't think we're litigating. I think what we're doing is actually discussing a safety measure that has been approved before or conditioned before for the same site at the same location, which we've already said it is, 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 is not expanded. So I, I think it's, it's, I, I don't understand that, you know, your, your argument because it is the exact same lot.
I, I hear you. I don't know all the reasons why this was never done. There may have been a decision made by a former city engineer or a public official to say, oh, we don't need that. I don't know. And it's not part of the project. The city engineer has already reviewed this project and didn't come to us with that recommendation. What I'm saying is, we all agree that this could be improved upon. The applicant is willing to make a good faith effort to do so, and I would give jurispr- responsibility. I think what I would be willing to modify my recommendation is, the city engineer will ultimately be responsible for determining if this is a safe and reasonable approach. That would be the modification I would make to my motion.
So you mean the adding of that island that Mr. McGregor?
Whatever the final solution is, would be the, up to the city engineer and the applicant to come up with. I am not going to modify my motion to say it needs to be a concrete island because that may not be the most safe and efficient solution.
But nobody did say it was a concrete island.
So could I get a second for my, or could I get a second?
I did second it.
I just, okay, I just modified the language a little bit, so that was all, okay.
Are we ready to take a roll call?
I am, it's up to you.
Want a roll call? You requesting a roll call?
Yes.
Commissioner Reddick?
Yes.
Commissioner Gossett?
Normal order.
I'm sorry, it's late.
It's okay.
It's, it's Gorn, sorry. Commissioner Gorn?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johannes? And Chair Gossett?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Our next item on the agenda is Director's Report.
Good evening, there's no Director's Report tonight.
Are there any planning commissioner communications?
Yeah, if you don't mind. It's late and I just want to say, Steve, that I, the discussion of the CIP tonight reminded me of the on-again, off-again communications with the county about what, if anything, they're doing about the old landfill south of Poplar Beach parking lot. We've, we've had hearings with them and, and made requests and, and not had, except for a brief report from Mr. Doughty some months ago, not heard if there's any action there. So maybe in a future Director's Report, we could be updated, please?
Okay.
Oh, with that, I would like to adjourn this meeting in honor of Joaquin Jimenez Jr. All in favor?
Yes.